Vieira.
Here.
Goos.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dean Felder. Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
We have a physical quorum present with Dean Felder being absent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby, I believe we have some housekeeping at this time for sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two.
And sixty-three as well, Council. This was, I'm asking this to be recalled. This is, was Mr. Miranda's motion, and I believe the dates for sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two are January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six P.M. I'd like to correct it. And a request from Mr. Michelini. He's requested number sixty-three be set for February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one at six P.M. Is that okay, Mr. Miranda, if you'd like to?
Chairman, I make that motion for items sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, January twenty-eighth, year twenty-twenty-one at six P.M., and sixty-three at February twenty-fifth, year twenty-twenty-one at six P.M.
All right, we have motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Yes, sir.
Housekeeping thing. You want us to turn our cameras back on, right? Okay, thank you.
Make sure you turn your cameras on, Councilmembers. We are missing one. There he is. Very good. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes that. And as was requested before, items five, six, and seven will be heard now with the NFL update with our Chief of Staff. I believe John Bennett should be on the line. There he is. I see them. They're all together. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, public. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Before getting into the NFL Super Bowl update, I was going to ask Su Ling or the tech team to bring up a slide just for a general announcement unrelated to this, but underneath the same item, number eighty-seven. Can you bring up that slide for me?
Thank you.
All right.
Still not seeing it. Su Ling, do you have the slide with? There you go.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement for council's sake since we interface with the administration. Michelle Phillips on the left of that slide for the viewing audience is retiring after fifteen years as basically the frontline receptionist to the mayor's office, and she is being backed by Tanisha Taylor on the right of the viewing screen. And so if you come into City Hall, please give a warm goodbye to Michelle Phillips and a warm welcome to Tanisha Taylor. So I just wanted to make that announcement to council since she is the face of the mayor's office when you enter. And we're welcoming Tanisha to tremendous background in serving the faith-based community and many congregations in a business management role. So we're welcoming Tanisha to the City Hall. That is it. Now we can switch back to the NFL.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Su Ling, this is Legal. Can you please activate "Thank You"?
All right, Council. We're going to spend a few minutes this afternoon, and we appreciate the time on item eighty-seven to give you an update on Super Bowl fifty-five. Before I turn it over to the team, we all know that we're no strangers in Tampa to major events, both in quantity and, of course, each event standing on its own in size and volume. We're no stranger to the Super Bowl. I was fortunate to be a commanding, have a commanding role in two thousand nine, and so I'm very familiar with the security side of this. And as you go through the presentation today, which is going to lead to a discussion on three different ordinances presented by the Legal Department, I just wanted to offer a framework, which I kind of often do, so you can have some thoughtful buckets around what will be presented. So in two thousand sixteen, council approved an agreement with the NFL to bring the Super Bowl back to Tampa. And based on that agreement, today you're going to see some framework about what we were going to call an event zone. And in that event zone, there's primarily three things that, in the macro, that you're going to see. You're going to see a chance for economic opportunity. You're going to see a chance for safeguarding free expression, and you're going to see the highest level of securing space for the public. So as you see the presentation from the NFL Host Committee, we have Chief Ruben Delgado here from the Police Department is representing the Public Safety Committee. This is labeled a national special security event by the Department of Homeland Security. So there's a lot that's been going on for about a two-year planning cycle. So when you see all of this unpacked, all of us are here from Legal, the city, the NFL Host Committee, and we're more than happy to answer questions. And Chairman, if we can get the presentation started and maybe hold questions until that's done, that would be great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. This is Tony Malkey, City of Tampa Special Events Superintendent. We're going to, we're going to have a little team effort here today and move briskly through the presentation, but we want to provide an overview of some of the activities and community benefits of hosting the Super Bowl. So we'll go through the history, some of the structure and stakeholders of the planning initiative, some of the social initiatives, the working groups for those planning elements. Of course, we'll touch on some pandemic considerations and then review the agenda items that are under consideration by council. With that, I'd like to hand off to Rob Higgins, CEO of the Host Committee.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I'm Rob Higgins, President/CEO of the Tampa Bay Super Bowl LV Host Committee. This is our community's fifth Super Bowl. Only three cities have hosted more, but the way that we got this Super Bowl versus the previous four is a little bit different. Traditionally, we go through the bid process and we're awarded. In this case, you may recall, we actually lost when we were bidding on it initially to L.A. Their stadium construction ran behind, and then we were eventually awarded because they needed to turn to a great partner in a community they know they could trust and do it on a short timeframe. So we're fortunate to have gotten through that bid process the way that it was and been awarded this fifth Super Bowl. In terms of our leadership, we are led, our Host Committee is led by two great individuals. They're co-chairs, Will Leatherford, former Speaker of the House, as well as Derek Brooks. Can't have Super Bowl fifty-five without a man that's synonymous with the number fifty-five, and both of them have done a fantastic job leading our Host Committee. Speaking of our Host Committee, we're fortunate to have a variety of different subcommittees that you'll see on your slide there. It really does take a village. We have a committee for just about anything and everything related to one of the world's largest events. They've been hard at work for the last few years in several cases, and we feel like we're positioned really well in terms of where we're at from a planning standpoint, being just ninety-three days out now. Every event that we do, especially Super Bowls, are private and public partnerships. From a public side of things, we're so fortunate and grateful to have the city on board with us, as well as the Florida Sports Foundation at the state level, the county. Naturally, the Bucks are really involved. The TSA manages Raymond James Stadium, our local convention and visitors bureaus, and so many more. The private sector is stepping up in a really big way as well. I won't take you through each and every private partner that's on this slide, but you get, you get a good feel for a lot of the different corporations that are a part of our Host Committee and are doing everything they can to deliver on our community's fifth Super Bowl. Before I turn it over to Claire Lessinger and La Kendria Robinson from our team, the thing I would just stress, the value in hosting a Super Bowl is really threefold. It's economic impact and the visitor spending that takes place. It's the marketing visibility that takes place, and then it's the social impact. And we're going to tie into that social impact now as to what you can expect and all the work that's been done. So I'll turn it over to La Kendria Robinson from our team.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So La Kendria Robinson, Director of Business Connect and Community Office for the Super Bowl fifty-five Host Committee. As many of you may be aware, Business Connect is the NFL's special supply diversity program for its special events, and so the Super Bowl is no different. Business Connect, its goal is to create contract opportunities for local diverse vendors or businesses here in Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas County to fulfill contract opportunities as it relates to the Super Bowl. We have been hard at work since it's a little over a year. Our goal was to identify local diverse-owned businesses that could fulfill those contracts, as well as produce a vendor resource guide that is distributed to all of the NFL contractors, our Host Committee, as well as any other event producer to use that guide to sort of vendors that they can work to fulfill special event-related contracts. There are a little over thirty business lines that you see here on your screen. They all range from audiovisual barricades, contract labor, graphic golf carts, scaffolding, trailers, transportation, any and every type of service that is needed to host and produce any sort of event related to Super Bowl fifty-five. The eligibility requirement for businesses to participate, businesses have to be at least fifty-one percent diverse-owned, so that's minority, woman, veteran, or LGBTQ-plus-owned business. They have to have been a business for at least three years with an established office here in the Hillsborough, Pinellas, or Pasco County area. And they also needed to provide a service or good that NFL contractors typically fly from. So those goods and services relate to those thirty business lines that you looked at on the previous screen, and then they had to be a direct source of that sort of service. The selection process kicked off in November of two thousand nineteen with the launch of our press conference. We had over a thousand businesses from our community attend that press conference eager to learn more about the process. Through about a six-month period, we began to meet with over two hundred businesses, community leaders, local leaders, any and everyone that had an interest in making sure that our small businesses or diverse-owned businesses got an opportunity. We made sure that we met with them so that we could explain the application process in detail. The application process closed in February of two thousand twenty. A short list of candidates were vetted and interviewed by our Business Connect and Host Committee team, and in March of two thousand twenty, we selected two hundred-plus final vendors to be showcased in our Business Connect Resource Guide. Just as we were selecting those businesses, COVID-nineteen happened, and we realized that we needed to make a significant pivot in order to bring value, not only to the businesses that we selected, but also our community at large. One of the ideas that was born out of that pivot is Rose to Game Day Restaurant Week, which is scheduled for December fourth through the thirteenth, so please mark your calendars. It is our opportunity to highlight fifty diverse-owned restaurants in Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Pasco County, so that they can get an opportunity to receive an influx of patrons to their restaurant to boost their business. Restaurants have been one of the hardest industries hit, and so this is our way to give back to those restaurants. A portion of those proceeds from Rose to Game Day Restaurant Week, one dollar per meal, will be donated back to Feeding Tampa Day to help support their mission and celebrate all that they have done during this difficult time.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Claire Lessinger. I'm serving as the COO for the Tampa Bay Super Bowl Host Committee and want to provide an overview of our legacy program to you. And when we have the opportunity to host these major events, it's way more than the big game, the economic impact, and the media exposure. Equally as important is the social impact and the lasting legacy that is left behind. With that being said, our legacy program, Forever Fifty-Five, represents a two-million-dollar investment in partnership with the NFL that consists of six pillars. These six pillars on the screen were, we relied on thought leaders and stakeholders to really help us identify the core needs in our community to develop these pillars. And within these pillars, we are investing those dollars back programmatically. It's the real goal and intent to maximize the impact. This slide represents our current partners and beneficiaries. This is an ever-growing list, as you can imagine, but also a great reflection of the organizations that we're working closely with and that will benefit from this investment in our community. To give a quick overview of each pillar, early childhood education. This pillar is actually going to be focused on piloting an initiative in partnership with TGH and Advent Health and other early learning partners in the community to provide wraparound services for indigent families identified by zip codes. Food insecurity. In partnership with Gen Youth, we will be implementing fifty-five breakfast cards throughout the tri-county area and Title I need-based schools. We'll also be providing grab-and-go flag football kits to those kids at these schools. Our Families pillar, we'll be partnering with Metropolitan Ministries and the American Cancer Society and other community partners to identify fifty-five families that will participate in our Forever Fifty-Five Legacy Program. Again, really focusing on need-based, providing wraparound services, as well as experiential opportunities to those families. Our Health and Wellness pillar, we're supporting the health and wellness and fitness-focused programming associated with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers newly-launched youth mentorship program in East Tampa. We'll be partnering with the Bucks every step of the way that relates to that impact in that neighborhood and ensuring that health and wellness is a priority and focus. Sustainability, in partnership with Tampa Electric, as well as NFL Green, we will be focused on two different environmental plans, one in partnership with NFL Green and then one here locally, that's truly focused on mitigating the environmental impact of Super Bowl LV events. Very robust plan that focuses on multiple areas, as listed in this slide, from recycling programs to material recovery to food recovery and greening projects. As you see on the screen, this reflects greening initiatives. The ones in green have already taken place, so we're well underway, with the ones in blue representing those that are still to be executed. Our last pillar, systemic justice. We convened a twenty-five-member committee that is creating an action plan, truly focused on community policing and financial literacy, but ultimately playing an active role in helping eliminate systemic justice and structural racism in our community. Last but not least, as part of our Forever Fifty-Five Legacy Program, we are launching a micro grant program next week. This actually provides multiple not-for-profit organizations in our community to apply, as long as they meet the requirements and, of course, align with our six pillars to be able to make sure we're maximizing the opportunity and the impact that this legacy program has here in Tampa Bay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Delgado with Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Council. Again, Ruben Delgado with Tampa Police. Just want to briefly touch on the Public Safety Subcommittee. The Chief of Staff indicated the Super Bowl is designated by the Department of Homeland Security as an NSSC event, which is a national special security event. With that comes a federal coordinator that has assigned to the event, which is U.S. Secret Service Special Agent in Charge, E. Sullivan. And I will coordinate with her in the assistance in getting some federally drafted here for the Super Bowl week. While TPD is the lead local, security for Super Bowl fifty-five, it's still a regional effort to be able to pull this off. Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Donald Wazinski, has been on my side from day one in their role in this event. And we've said it many times, again, touched on it earlier, that many, that many large events, the relationships with our local, state, and federal law enforcement partners in this region is truly what makes us unique and making these, planning these large-scale events a lot easier. I'd like to think that the ability to safely plan the events that we have in the past with minimal disruptions to the visitors and citizens of the city is part of the reason why Rob and his great team are continuing to bring these great events to the city of Tampa. We've been actively planning this great event for two years, and we continue to work through the challenges of COVID, through virtual meetings with our public safety partners, the NFL, the Host Committee, and several other partners involved in the plan. From the public safety standpoint, the Subcommittee is made up of eight branches with over fifty subcommittees within those branches of local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, as well as the Host Committee and other city departments. Security plans are in place for the air, the water, and the land to ensure a safe and secure event. With an NSSC designation, certain increased security protocols will be in place in regards to the venues, the vehicle screening, and several other safeguards to ensure a safe and secure event. With that said, extensive measures are also in place to create a safe event for the residents of the city and thousands of visitors, with the least amount of inconvenience to our community while still maintaining a safe fan experience for the city. Plans for us are changing by the week, sometimes by the day, and we continue to work close with the Host Committee and the NFL on these changes. I think we'll touch on it a little bit later, but we're working through COVID protocols that we will formulate through all of our public safety plans, and as well as the MOTs and the road closures that we're working on, continue to adjust based on the event footprint and the venue activation.
All right, Council. Tony Malkey, Special Events. Want to discuss the NFL Experience Presented by Lowe's. So the Super Bowl is much more than a football game. It is really an engagement of the entire community. And one of the things that Tampa has brought with some of these national events, including the college football playoff, as well as the NCAA Women's Final Four, is an opportunity for the community and visitors to experience the game without actually attending the game. With this, the Super Bowl Experience this year is proposed to be in, primarily in Julian B. Lane Riverfront Park, with activations extending the entire two-point-seven miles of the Riverwalk. And for the first time ever, the Super Bowl Experience is going to be outdoors, and it's also going to be free for all attendees, which is really important to reduce barriers for people's participation. And our Riverwalk is such a conduit to create an event experience and campus that's, that's really branded and cohesive and allows for opportunities for, for people to spread out, really, and enjoy the, the activities. So this slide here kind of gives you a feel for what some of those elements are going to look like. It's going to be built out with, with all the activities that you would see traditionally in maybe a convention center, but this year it's going to be outside, which helps us with some of our pandemic considerations, which we'll touch upon here in a little while. And this is the first time that Riverfront Park has been used for the national events. Previously, it hadn't been renovated during the college football playoff, and we're very excited to, to showcase it as part of Tampa's footprint for, for this event. Moving into transportation, one of the most important elements that, that we have to be successful with our events and, and with people coming into the city is a comprehensive transportation plan. And we have a active Subcommittee that's working with the Host Committee and also working with the partners, some of the vendors that the NFL and the Host Committee are working with, with SB Plus Game Day, as well as Kerry Transportation. And we're engaging with multiple stakeholders, such as the water taxi, to activate our, our waterways as a transportation option, as well as HART and other services. From a marketing communication standpoint, we continue to tell the story of this Super Bowl in a variety of different ways, whether it's our website, to our podcast, to all of our different social channels. There's a lot of information that we're distributing on an ongoing basis. We created a unified regional collaboration committee with a variety of different agencies to make sure that we have a really consistent message across the board, leading up to and then also during the Super Bowl week, as well as the Communications Committee with a variety of key stakeholders. Naturally, the city has been a big part of each and every one of those committees, as well as our Social QB program, which has really helped guiding the message from a social media standpoint. The city is on Team Together. We have three different teams, Forward, Forever, Together, and Together is really focused on the cohesiveness of our communities. And actually, the city makes a lot of sense to be on, on that team. Another way to get involved is through our Community Ambassador Program. As I mentioned before, it takes the village to put on this event. We have nearly six thousand community ambassadors already registered and helping volunteer to make sure our hometowns on the biggest of the states. And coming back to the pandemic considerations, it's, as Chief Delgado mentioned, public safety is one of our primary focuses type of event. And the health aspect of that, no difference. As we, we know the conditions and the situation that we're dealing with will continue to evolve. The NFL has a comprehensive plan that has been instituted at all of its venues and stadiums these days. This will continue for all Super Bowl events. So they're, they're looking at technology for screening and access to the events, and ultimately we'll have an approach of adaptability based on the conditions with, early in the year. And so today, Council is considering three ordinances. I want to speak on the event zone ordinance. So the event zone ordinance is essentially an Eric Brown map footprint, that campus for official event, the NFL. It creates that zone for official event activities. And we've designed the footprint to really cover the ingress and egress areas around the stadium and close proximity areas to official activities. So I want to be clear that this is not eliminating outside events. It provides an opportunity for temporary outdoor activations, but it does some conditions on their set. Now, part of this is to ensure that people, there's no confusion between official events and sanctioned events. And also provides, we will know if there's unauthorized activity in place, so that public safety officials drive those activities. But we've seen that previous national activations, there is a challenge with counter merchandise, as well as tickets. So we want to be able to control what activities are in these proximate areas to, to the, to the event. Now, the NFL is a business, and they are conscious of their sponsor obligations. Anybody that's ever seen something like this thing around the Super Bowl, the, the discussion of the big game for non-sanctioned things. And of course, we want to make sure that Super Bowl activities are properly recognized. Go ahead. One of the things I want to highlight, an event zone does, and it doesn't do, an event zone essentially creates a temporary building overlay that regulates how temporary activities can be conducted. I'll spend, with the focus on those unusual activities that could be predatory to, to our visitors and our residents. And it also designates a reserved area for First Amendment protected speech. So you'll see that on the maps that we, there are designated reserved areas for that, but just note that that is not limited to those spaces exclusively. So people will be able to, outside of these designated zones. What it doesn't do is it does not restrict travel or movement. You'll see that these footprints do overlap some residential areas, but it does not restrict travel. There will be some separate security zones in close proximity at strategic times to the event, but it is not the size of what you'll see in these maps. And it also doesn't target them in traditional game day activities, such as working in residential areas, or say, the kid's on the corner. Sometimes we are not targeting those activities whatsoever. If you move on, I'll show you the first map here.
All right. How much longer do you have of this presentation?
There's two more slides.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So on this, this shows kind of the NFL-controlled space around the stadium. If you click here, the next one, this is our proposed event zone with the buffer around the stadium and those active areas. If you click again, you'll see where a designated free expression area, and then one more click. And this is to compare what Miami did. So Miami had a much larger area. Here in Tampa, we looked at things very critically and surgically, and we wanted to right-size this event zone to be very specific to the activation. Go ahead. Again, this is downtown along the Riverwalk. About the whole two, two-point-seven miles is active for events during the week. And here's the proposed event zone around that. Again, very strategic around the main activation areas without impacting the city too extensively. Click again. Click again. We also have a designated expression area within the footprint, and for final comparison, that's what downtown Miami had for their clean zone for relative size. So we've tried to keep it very precise to where the activations are going to be and not to be as disruptive as what it may seem. With that, I think we'll...
Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grimes, City Attorney.
Yes, yes.
We have three ordinances that we're presenting to you this morning for first reading. I'd like to just quickly explain the purpose of those ordinances, and then we'll be available for any questions. The ordinances are items five, six, and seven on your agenda. As I mentioned, there are three of them. One of the ordinances is temporary in nature and specific relates to the Super Bowl. The other two ordinances are permanent in nature and are also general in nature and are not limited or specific just to the Super Bowl. I'll address the first ordinance, the temporary ordinance first, and that's the Event Zone Ordinance, item number seven on the agenda. That ordinance is, as Mr. Mulkey mentioned, is designate two areas as event zones and then provides for certain regulations within those event zone areas. The ordinance, as I said, is temporary in nature, and it will be in effect from Thursday, January 28th through Game Day on February 7th, and following two days after that to February 9th. And the purpose, the before and after the Game Day effectiveness of the ordinance is to allow for staging and then demobilization of all the different activities that are going to be surrounding the stadium and the downtown event areas. So historically, with previous Super Bowls, where some of you may recall, cities adopted a similar ordinance designating what previously was known as the clean zone and now known as an event zone. And we're also doing it in conjunction with the obligations that we committed to back in 2016, the city adopted Resolution 2016-353. But we're adopting an event zone not only because we're obligated to under the bid resolution, but what's very important is that it's also being presented to support substantial interests the city has in protecting the public's health, safety, and welfare, not just in the event zones, but in the adjacent areas. I did hear Mr. Dingfelder's remarks this morning before he left the meeting, and I know that he mentioned that we host events in and around the stadium quite often, and that he didn't think it was any, you know, that significant of a deal, that it was no big deal. But I know Mr. Miranda can attest that, living in close proximity to the stadium, that there is an impact on these adjacent areas. So this ordinance, and it's a little different from previous ordinance, this ordinance is intended to protect those areas, but at the same time, trying to balance that with providing ample opportunities for citizens, members of the public, to participate in some of the benefits that the Super Bowl brings with the commercial activities, and then also to ensure that the, that anyone interested in expressing their First Amendment rights in and around the event areas has the opportunity to do so. So again, the substantial interest that we're trying to protect, we have to make sure that there is a free flow of pedestrian and vehicular traffic in and around the area. We need to address the trash and littering issue, the aesthetics of the area, all the different activities, the impacts that they present on not just the adjacent areas, but individual properties, and then, of course, the safety issue that you heard Chief Delgado address. So I'm not going to go through the details of the ordinance, but I'm just going to give you a real high overview. It's important to understand that a lot of the uses or all of the uses that are typically allowed under our zoning code are going to continue to be allowed in the event zone and during the duration of this ordinance. But in addition to that, we are providing the ability for individuals to obtain a permit to conduct what's called a temporary outdoor activity, allowing them to sell food, beverages, goods outside of permanent structures. They will have to get a special use permit to do that. It will have to be conducted in a tent, and that's for aesthetic purposes. It can't be conducted on the right-of-way, and that's to address the free flow of traffic. It also cannot affect access to an adjacent parcel, and they have to provide screening, again, for aesthetic purposes. There are specific tent requirements that will be in effect during this time period, and there are also sign restrictions. And I think it's important to note that the sign restrictions that we have in the ordinance are already restrictions that we have in our sign code. So it's really no additional restrictions, I think, as maybe Mr. Dingfelder previous thought. Actually, it's just reiterating the restrictions, the sign restrictions that we have in place. Likewise, commercial activities in the right-of-way will also be prohibited, as they are today. We do provide exemptions for the Gasparilla Pirate Fest and then any other official activities of the NFL or the host committee events. One important provision in this ordinance is the First Amendment expression areas. We have identified two very key locations close to the stadium and then in downtown Tampa that will be set aside and actually reserved for individuals that want to conduct First Amendment activities. That's not to say they're going to be limited to those areas, but if they have a larger group or they want to make definitive plans, it's important for them to know there will be an area set aside and reserved for them on which there will be no other activities but on which they can conduct their First Amendment rights and speech. We provide a penalty, which is a civil citation, but we will also have the ability to enforce this ordinance pursuant to any other provision of law. So that's an overview of the Event Zone Ordinance. As I mentioned, we're also, items number five and six are two permanent ordinances that we're presenting to you today. One of them deals with alcoholic beverage sales, and the other one deals with the ability of our code enforcement inspectors to enforce county ordinances in the city. As far as the AP ordinance, that, this is addressing an issue that surfaced prior to and quite often prior to the Super Bowl, but also the Super Bowl is impacted. The hours of alcoholic beverage sales and service under our existing code is limited on Sundays. Every other day of the week, alcoholic beverages may be sold or served from 7:00 a.m. till 3:00 a.m., but on Sundays, we have a provision in our code that does not allow beverages to be sold until 11:00 a.m. What we're proposing to do is to change that time, 7:00 a.m., the start time on Sunday from 7:00 a.m., which would make it consistent seven days a week. It would be 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. seven days a week. You may know that the airport already has the ability to sell and serve from 7:00 a.m. till 3:00 a.m. seven days a week. We're asking that that same permission be provided in the rest of the city, and not just for the Super Bowl, but on a permanent, ongoing basis. I know that the Special Events Office has received numerous requests for numerous events on Sundays, which often start earlier than 11:00, such as various foot races, brunches, the art festival, and other holiday events. I also know and recognize that City Council is in the process of evaluating your, the hours of operation for alcoholic beverage sales, but what you were looking at previously, and I think what you're going to consider again on November 19th, relates to closure hours, not opening hours. So I did want to draw that distinction with respect to this proposed ordinance. And then the third and final that we're presenting to you today relates to Chapter 19, and that deals with the authority of our code enforcement officers to enforce county ordinances applicable in the city of Tampa. And in relation to the Super Bowl, the one ordinance that we're considering, beginning to enforce, is the human trafficking ordinance that the county has adopted. Human trafficking is an activity regarding which our security will be on alert and focused on. There is a state statute that already criminalizes human trafficking. However, the county has adopted an ordinance that applies countywide that imposes a requirement for posting public awareness signs related to human trafficking, and the signs are required to be posted at various different establishments. And so we want to ensure that the police don't have to deal with enforcing a signage requirement and instead empower our code enforcement officers to have that authority to enforce county ordinances, such as a signage requirement in the city. Now, this would, going forward, it would also allow our code enforcement officers to enforce any other county ordinance that's applicable in the city. One other example I could give you is there's a vaping ordinance that the county adopted that applies citywide. So we are asking that council put on first reading these three ordinances, again, items five, six, and seven on your agenda.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members? There are no questions from council members, and I will ask that we read these ordinances, five, six, and seven. Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number five?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number E20208, Chapter 14, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration in ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida pertaining to the hours of sale and service of alcohol beverages on and off premises, amending Chapter 14 offenses, Article II, miscellaneous offenses, Division 10, alcohol beverages, and Section 14-150.1A, hours of sale for consumption and off premises of the city of Tampa Code, revising the hours of sales and service of alcohol beverages on Sunday and providing for uniform hours seven days a week, providing for repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no and Dingfelder being absent at vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson, would you like to take item number six? Councilman Goode, would you like to take item number six?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did have a question on item number seven that came to mind, sir.
Item number seven, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Kind of related to Mr. Dingfelder's question earlier. In reference to the event zone, how much of this will be affecting the residential areas? That looks like a wide span, the way that map looks. If you can put that map back up, because I really couldn't tell what major rules would be blocked, or I couldn't depict that at all.
I think it's important to understand one thing, Councilman Goode, and that is that in these areas that are being, quote, "affected," it really, it doesn't restrict those residents from conducting their normal activities, including their businesses, but it does provide protection to them from individuals that are associated with the Super Bowl activities encroaching into their areas and setting up tents or different avenues to sell goods or wares. It protects them from that happening in an unregulated fashion. So nobody would be able to go into those areas and just start selling merchandise without going through this permitting process that we've established under the ordinance. So when, I think, Councilman Dingfelder thought they were going to be, residents in these areas were going to be further restricted, but actually, it's for their protection more than it is for any type of restriction on them. We're restricting other people's activities in these event areas, not restricting the activities of the residences and businesses in those areas.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Would you mind reading item number six?
Yes, sir. File number E2020-CH19, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration in ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida relating to the authority of the Director of Code Enforcement and Neighborhood Enhancement to administer and enforce certain codes and ordinances amending City of Tampa Code ordinances, Chapter 19, property maintenance and structural standards, Section 19-4, Department of Code Enforcement duties and scope of authority of the Director, enabling the Director to administer and enforce Hillsborough County ordinances enforceable within the city of Tampa, including Section 36-373 of the Hillsborough County Code pertaining to human trafficking, repealing all ordinance or parts of the ordinance in conflict where, providing severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder being absent.
All right, thank you very much. Item number seven, Councilman Viera, would you mind reading item number seven?
Sure. My pleasure, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance designating portions of the city of Tampa as an event zone, also known as a clean zone, in order to regulate activities between 12:01 a.m., January 28th, 2021, until midnight on, February 9th, 2021, in preparation for a connection with and for demobilization of hosting events for the 2021 National Football League Super Bowl LV, providing for regulations in areas designated as event zones for the sale of alcoholic beverages, temporary outdoor activities, tents, signage, prohibiting certain commercial activities in the right-of-way, subject to certain exceptions, providing for First Amendment expression areas, providing for penalties, providing for definitions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from, motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no and Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson.
Just one quick comment for anybody handling security for this event. The main benefit that the community gets at a big event like this, that takes a lot of time, volunteer time, leadership time, money, services from city and county, and the main benefit that the community gets is publicity. But the benefit of the publicity is what's included in the stories. It's not just that they mention Tampa or Tampa Bay. What is mentioned in the stories? And the philosophy of the last mayor was to militarize events, and the, all the money and time and hard work everybody put into the RNC Convention was completely wiped out because of the pictures of the militarized zone around the RNC Convention. And so it gave a very bad impression of Tampa, and it had the reverse effect or the opposite effect of what we wanted and what all the hard work of all the good people put in. And so we need to make sure that we're protected. Everybody needs to be protected. This is scary doing a national event, but please, I would just ask you all, where we run into problems is how the zones are handled, where the free speech zones, and also how everything looks. And so if it looks like, you know, a Third World riot zone, then we're going to get bad publicity, even if the rest of the game is handled really well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode?
Mr. Carlson brought up a point, but I think that since we have staff here who are working on the event, and Mr. Carlson has a concern about that, I'd like to, from the commander who's going to be in charge of security to talk about that, and the event coordinator, to make sure that we're not militarizing, but making sure that we have a safe environment, but at the same token, making sure the public doesn't feel that way, and we're marking and, you know, for light for the city of Tampa. So if the commander, I think it's Ruben Delgado, Assistant Chief, can talk about that, and the event coordinator, Mr. Mulkey, or Rob can talk about that. I think that's important, understand?
Yeah, Ruben Delgado here, I'll talk to him. That is one of the things that we are planning for. We obviously keep that in mind when we go through our security plans. The best thing for us as law enforcement, when we provide this plan, is to be seen as little as possible during the peak of the event and the Game Day, and least intrusive to the citizens enjoying the Riverwalk all week or at the Game Day. Obviously, with the NSFC event, there are some safety protocols in place when you get a little closer to the stadium and a little closer to the venues, but outside of that, it's going to be, you know, an approach that we take on a normal day just to ensure the safety of the citizens.
Yeah, I would just add, from our perspective, it's Rob Higgins with the host committee, for the last 18 months, we've been working with a lot of the different networks involved. CBS is the broadcast network for our game specifically, but every major network still attends this... attends as part of it. We've developed great relationships. We've worked with them on set locations, beauty shot locations. We're arming them with the information of how far we've come as a community since we last hosted in two thousand nine and then where we're going in the future. So naturally, as you mentioned, uh, a, a lot of the value is in, uh, the, the storytelling and media value that's associated with hosting, and we're doing everything we can to make sure we maximize that.
And, uh, Councilman, this is Tony Mulkey with special events. Uh, I just want to add, one of the, uh, defining factors of these types of activities is the access, the, the, the free access to the activities. We want people to be involved. We want people to participate, a, and I think that, that this is a little different. Uh, we'll have some security protocols in place. We, we want people engaged and we want to show off the city as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That settles Super Bowl. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to open the nine-thirty public hearing?
So moved.
A motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
All right.
All right, any opposed? Councilman Viera, you have to step out when?
Uh, and thank you for that, Mr. Chair. I, I had to pick up my son at school at three-ten, and I got someone to pick him up for me. My, uh, usual ride for Thursday, unfortunately couldn't make it. God bless him. And, um, so I'm, I'm good. I mean, my time has been extended from this individual probably another hour and a half or two hours. Um, I, I do need to step outside for a three o'clock call on city business and then a four o'clock call that shouldn't take more than ten minutes. Um, but I, I was going to request, I don't know how the chair feels about this, I see eighty-two and seventy-nine, um, just since these were four to three votes, um, if they could be pushed up just right now. I know one of them, we have a lot of speakers, so.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to bring up. If we could start with seventy-nine and then go to eighty-two, considering the circumstances, seventy-nine, I believe, has a lot of speakers. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
All right, let's start with item number seventy-nine.
Hello, Mary Seminiego, Planning and Growth Management. Um, item number seventy-nine is REZ twenty thirty-eight. It's a second reading before you. All required changes that were part of the staff report for first reading have been completed or at the city clerk's office.
We need to swear you in.
Please raise your right hand to be solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you. I apologize. You're ready to proceed.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to swear in. How are we going to handle this in the hybrid version, Madam Clerk?
We could swear all of the applicants and their representatives.
Sorry. We could swear everyone that's present here in, and if anyone's virtual, we'll, we could swear them in one by one.
Okay.
So if you're going to be speaking on item number seventy-nine, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn if you're present. If you're outside, please do so. If you're going to be using the kiosk, I guess you could, um, make your way to the kiosk and we could swear you in then if you're going to be using it.
Please raise your right hand to be solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
All right. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I feel like I have to gaze a long way to, to see you all, but great to see you in person. Truitt Gardner, four hundred North Ashley Drive, here on behalf of Related. Uh, we were last in front of you October first. This is the Ritz Carlton, uh, project on Bay Shore designed by world-class architect, uh, Architect Tonica. And, uh, when we were last in front of you, I used worlds, words like world-class and all of which were true, but I got my hand slapped after. Ritz Carlton has specific words you're allowed to use and not allowed to use. World-class not being one of those, but peerless is one, and I do think that this project is a peerless project for Tampa and will really raise us up one level. And, um, with that, there were a few minor comments that needed to be made on the site plan. We agreed to those. Those have been made, and we fully vetted all of the zoning issues. We had support from Planning Comma, Planning Commission had nothing but positive support from, uh, the city's reviewing agencies with respect to most of the items except for a few technical ones, uh, some of which were cured in the amendments to the application. And we did have some opposition, and that opposition was primarily to the Stovall condominium immediately to the south of it, and it was primarily dealing with the siding of the building. And given that we had fifteen to twenty minutes to unpack everything, I wanted our architect, who is available by phone, who's going to call in and talk briefly to the level of thought and sensitivity that went into where the building was located, just so you know that. I believe that, um, there are some people here to speak in opposition. They were represented by a spokesman before Mr. Baca, and now I believe they want to speak individually. We believe what you'll hear is a lot of what was said before. There was an interesting point that was made at the last hearing, which dealt with the proximity of the tower, that we have two towers, the Bay Shore Tower, I'll, I'll call it, the proximity of it in comparison to the, uh, Stovall condominium to our south. And basically, the way that it was phrased was what we were proposing was completely unprecedented for Tampa. The only place where something like this would belong would be in a city like Manhattan. And we did a quick study after, and I just wanted to put up one thing in our own backyard.
It's, it's on, okay.
Thank you. So we discounted downtown, given that most of those buildings are office buildings, and wanted to look solely at residential, thinking that would be peer-to-peer. This is Harbor Island. There are three towers. We'll call it Tower One, Tower Two, and Tower Three, all residential in nature. Then when you look at distant separations again to orient you, what I went through is Tower One, Tower Two, Tower Three. The separation from Tower One to Tower Two is forty-one feet. The separation from Tower Two to Tower Three is fifty-two. And if you'll recall, what we're proposing is forty-seven feet. So we feel like it's directly in line and there's precedent in Tampa alone. And then further, maybe this is because I'm living through a, a new construction next door to me and, and reminded that our setbacks as far as residential are typically seven feet on each side, so fourteen, and what we're proposing is forty-seven. I know that was a big issue before, but I just wanted to provide some context with that. And with that, I'll turn things over. He's available virtually to our architect, and he wanted to talk about the siding of the building.
Okay.
And please, if you could swear in, man.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but is your camera on?
Um, no. Unfortunately, I do not have a camera. I'm on just audio. Um, my name is Patrick Giannini. I'm a senior associate.
Wait, just, just, just a moment, just a moment. Mr. Shelby?
Do I turn it, there we go. Okay, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, with regard to quasi-judicial hearings, um, and in terms of taking testimony, um, we have this requirement, uh, if you're going to be appearing, you do have to be appearing on video. That is so that person can be seen and identified and, uh, have the opportunity, uh, to participate virtually.
We need the individual on camera, Mr. Gardner?
I believe what we can do is if he's not allowed, then Mike Hammond with Related is, is here.
Okay.
He obviously worked closely with the architect, and I can, I believe he can provide this testimony.
All right, we'll go, we'll do that instead. We need to see the person who is speaking just for, you know, legal purposes.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, again, just a reminder that we're, now we're in this hybrid environment, uh, for all petitioners, uh, those who are going to be participating, and for those, um, people who are going to be testifying, uh, whether you're a petitioner or a neighborhood representative or, um, an interested person, um, you're going to have to be able to have, um, the ability for appearing virtually, um, video only, not phone in, and certainly it should be on a, um, a, a smart device that's not a telephone. Telephone does not allow us through this platform to be able to use video. So, um, that being the first case, this has come up, um, please, everybody be on notice that if you are going to be participating in quasi-judicial hearings, you need video capability. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Hammond. I'm a senior vice president with the Related group. And, um, when we first looked at this property and first started the site planning, one of the first things we looked at was our proximity to our neighbors. And we realized that the Stovall Tower was very close because they're very close to their, their own property line, and we also have townhouses across the street from us on Santiago, and then we had the Aquatica Tower just behind it. Uh, so when we looked at this, you know, we knew that, you know, most people buy on Bay Shore for the views. I mean, obviously it's a lovely neighborhood, so you're buying into the neighborhood, but also for the views. And we purposely moved this building back off of Bay Shore an additional twenty-five feet from where the setbacks allow, and we did that to protect the view of the Stovall toward downtown. Bay Shore at this point in time sort of curves and it continues to curve more, you know, up to the northeast. So we backed the building off of Bay Shore an additional twenty-five feet to make sure that that view corridor was protected for, for them. And if you look at our, um, slide here, what we did when we did the study of the views, we're actually only blocking about a thirty degrees of their three hundred and sixty-degree view by placing the building where we placed it. If we move it forward toward Bay Shore, we block more of their views. If we move it back, we actually block more of their views to the north and northwest. And the other issue that was brought up at the last hearing was regarding the proximity was privacy. The, what the architect pointed out was that these buildings face forward. Most of your view is toward the water. That's what you're trying to protect. And if we were to move the building back, then our units would be literally at that point in time looking into the Stovall. So we feel that this was sort of the best compromise of all the, all the solutions that were out there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Petitioner, do you have anybody else?
We'd like to save our time for rebuttal there.
Yes, sir. All right. Public comment, uh, we'll start with the people that are here in the audience, and then we'll go to the live, uh, callers. Sir, you, if you approach the podium, uh, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is JP Lacoste, and I'm a resident of thirty-two oh three Bay Shore Boulevard, the Stovall. First of all, thank you for, uh, having the time today for this. I, this is my first council meeting, and I see that it's, uh, it can be a, a, a time-consuming effort, so thanks for that on my regard. Um, I'd like to voice my support for the development of the Bayles property, but my opposition to the current site plan. As was discussed in the last best, last meeting, the project itself is well-considered and designed, and I applaud the architect's work, but it needs a larger space or a smaller footprint to do justice to the development. It's overreaching with regard to the planned distance between the proposed tower and the Stovall. Then, excuse me. I think the current site plan sacrifices too much of the architect's design to profitability. As was ably demonstrated by George Baca and Steve Gross at the last meeting, this is an extreme departure from any other pair of condominium towers on Bay Shore, and if approved, will set an unfortunate standard for future development. Once done, these two buildings will be forever too close to each other for the comfort and the enjoyment of the occupants of both buildings. Prior to the first meeting, I submitted written comments, which I'd like to quickly reiterate. Bay Shore Boulevard is a unique local treasure, which is a part of what makes Tampa a special place to live. I urge thoughtful consideration of the long-term impact of this decision before you today. In my written comments, I suggested that Tampa did not need to emulate Miami's Brickell District. In fact, such a course of action would inevitably and irretrievably change the flavor of Tampa. By way of example, starting in the nineteen seventies and thereafter, I've had the opportunity to periodically visit the south of France, spending time both in Saint-Tropez and Monte Carlo. In the nineteen seventies, these were both vibrant and attractive places, each with their own distinct identity. Monte Carlo is upscale and fancy, with a lot of classic French architecture. Saint-Tropez was more relaxed and comfortable, the seaside village feel to it. Both were incredible places. Fifty years on, Monte Carlo is a jungle of bland, high-rise condo towers piled one on top of another, just another city by the water, no different from any others. Sadly, the unique essence of that city has been squeezed out by overly ambitious development. Saint-Tropez, on the other hand, retains much of its original flavor, reflecting fifty years of careful development, and that continuity of experience is why it's one of Europe's favorite summer destinations. I'd like to urge the council today to be thoughtful stewards of Bay Shore Boulevard, allowing for growth and evolution while resisting the allure of maximum development and retaining the essential character of such a special gift to our city. We won't be around fifty years from now to see how Bay Shore will look, but our children will, and I want them to be proud of how our city handled this growth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. All right, next speaker.
My name is Glenn Jones, and my friends know me as Buck Jones. I live on the third floor of the Stovall on the side of the Bayles property. I'm here to advocate reconsideration of how that property is to be redeveloped. As others have said, let's talk about what we're not against or not talking about. We're not against, the pro, the project is laid out, two towers, quite a few townhomes. Uh, we are not, uh, here talking about sunlight, about views of downtown or property values. But I'm here to argue that these facts need to be taken into very careful consideration. The south foundation of the tower on Bay Shore will be sixteen feet from the Stovall property line, property line between the two properties. There's another seven feet to the foundation of the Stovall. That means there's going to be twenty-three feet between the foundations of the two buildings. Then there's another twenty to twenty-five feet, uh, they, the related folks say it's forty-seven feet in total, and I'll accept that. Uh, so, uh, but forty-seven feet between two towers of Bay Shore, between the living spaces, the bedrooms, is an, is an extraordinary departure from what we've had so far. Finally, I, I, this is not about Mrs. Jones and me, but we have a twenty-foot wide patio out the north side of our building, so when we walk out on that patio and to, to the north edge, we'll be looking at a, at a tower taller than a football field, as long, twenty-three feet away. I, I ask each of you to think about if you walked out on the patio at your residence and got to the edge of it, twenty-three feet, there was a building that tall. Again, we do not oppose there being a tower, a large tower on Bay Shore. We simply think that it's, that it's not, should not be put where it's been designed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak at this time? Hearing none? Do we have, uh, callers on the line?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just for the purposes of ensuring there's nobody at the kiosk.
Is there anybody at the kiosk on the other side of this wall?
Nope.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Now, everyone that gets called up for, uh, the public comment that they've called in, remember you need a video and audio, and then we swear you in. Thanks.
I'll pull them in like three at a time because there's so many.
How many you have, excuse me, how many do you have?
Um, about eighteen.
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 Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Are they recorded?
Do we have recorded messages as well?
We don't do recorded messages for quasi-items.
Thank you very much. Are you keeping time? I'm keeping time up here, but do you have a clock?
Yes.
Oh, you are? Okay.
So far, we have Carol Ann Bennett, Pamela Carpenter. If you could turn on your videos. So far, we have Carol Ann Bennett, Pamela Carpenter. If you could turn on your videos.
All right, we have Carol Ann Bennett. If you would raise your right hand, they're going to swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
My video is not on.
Unmute yourself, Carol Ann.
I do.
All right, go ahead. You have three minutes.
My name is Carol Ann Bennett. I'm a lifelong resident of South Tampa. The 30 oak trees they will cut down are the rarest trees in the city and perhaps the most valuable. The grand oaks provide millions of dollars in benefits every year. These are the future grand oaks. Because these medium-sized oaks have less protection than grand oaks, they are cut down at a higher rate. The decimation of this size tree means that as our grand oaks die, there are fewer trees to take their place. You do not want a tree population dominated by large trees because that forest is unsustainable. Instead, you want a mix of young, mature, and older trees. Tampa's urban forest provides $139 million a year worth of benefits. The city should not approve this. It benefits a few at the expense of the many. At the very least, they should be required to transplant some of these trees. During elections for city council and mayor, I attended candidate debate forums. I heard a lot about housing and listening to residents and neighborhood advocates. What I did not hear any candidate say is, "I am going to deliver what Tampa really needs, more luxury condos." I did not hear anyone ask a candidate, "What are you going to do about the luxury housing crisis?" Yes, the multitudes are coming, but the developers and the new residents need to pay for the cost of their impact. They should pay for the additional water, police, firefighters, teachers, schools, and sewage pipes. On behalf of all the current residents, I say, "We do not agree to subsidize, subsidize the moving costs of future residents. We do not agree to subsidize the profits of rich developers." Growth needs to be where city officials decide it is beneficial, not where it is detrimental. Growth needs to be where city officials decide it should be, not where the developers can make the biggest profits. I am sick and tired of developers thinking they are entitled to build whatever they want, wherever they want it. The recent flagrant violations of law by DeBartolo and Avanti at the old Georgetown apartments is just the most recent example. They have a staggeringly inflated sense of entitlement. They shout loud and long, if anyone says no, "We'll sue. We'll sue early. We'll sue often. We'll sue with a vengeance." When the city says no to them, they rattle their savers. They are bullies. They will get what they want, or they will pound the snot out of us. They are not looking out for us. They are not accountable to the people for their actions. It is your job to look out for us. Many years ago, when Sam Gibbons retired and Jim Davis was running for office, I wanted to get one of his bumper stickers. I was shopping in Publix, and I saw a man wearing a Jim Davis button. I walked over and said, "Excuse me, do you work for Jim Davis?" He twinkled a smile at me and said, "No, ma'am. I'm Sam Gibbons. I work for you." You work for us. You care about us. You have our best interests at heart. You plan this city according to what is best for the whole. You should decide what gets built. Threats and greed should not build a city. When they do, it is an ugly city indeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Phone turned on. Thank you.
Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. I just want to bring to your attention, I believe there was reference made to other properties outside of this property that's before you today. Again, you're looking at this particular parcel. You're looking at the evidence. And again, I'm going to remind you that this is a quasi-judicial matter. It's not a legislative matter. Therefore, your decisions must be based on competent substantial evidence that's in the record. It's not somebody's opinion unless they're a qualified expert, and they're basing their expert opinion upon evidence in the record as well. So I'm going to ask you to be mindful of that. I'm going to ask the public to also be mindful of the fact that this council, by law, is required to base its evidence not on emotion, not on opinion of lay, of laypeople, but rather on the evidence that supports the criteria that is set forth in the Code of Ordinance upon which they must base their decision. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Pamela Carpenter. If you would raise your right hand, we'll swear you in, and please unmute yourself. Oh, let's swear all three. We have Pamela Carpenter, Ms. McMillan, and Dawn Defosset. Yes, sir. If you could raise your right hands, and we'll swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Let's speak two minutes.
Thank you.
I do.
I do.
And we'll go back to Ms. McMillan to swear her in. Pam, Ms. Carpenter, go ahead.
Okay, I did send a slide to Suling. I don't know if it'll be able to be put up. If not, I'm sure she can make it available to you. I'm a 20-plus-year resident on Isabella Avenue, and I have been involved with the discussions with the neighborhood and the representatives of relevant for the project. I'm neither for or against the project. I'm here to bring some facts to your attention. The Bay Oaks project did not need a traffic study, and we understand why, because there was 170, there are 179 units, and the proposal is for a total of 185. A very close number, and one could argue that the number of vehicles will be approximately the same. However, within a three-block radius of Bay Oaks, there are five other either already constructed newly or almost finished buildings or proposed buildings. They are in this order. Aquatica, which was a vacant parking lot, is occupied now, and it's 32 units, 16 stories. Altura, which is pre-construction, is also on Isabella, very close to MacDill. It was a parking lot. It is now 70, proposed 73 units, 22 stories. The Sanctuary, the construction's in progress. It was a one-family unit, a large one, and it's 15 units, 17 stories. And then there's two other townhome projects on Barcelona near Isabella. One is closer to Bay Shore, and it's seven units, three stories high. And another one is six units. The previous one I just mentioned was a vacant lot. The second one, which is six units along Isabella and two stories high, was a single-family residence. So my math shows that of these six units, including Bay Oaks, we have or had, before the single residences were demolished, 101, 181 units. The proposal for these six buildings totally brings us to 318. I don't know what number the city uses for average number of vehicles, but if we just said that everybody had one and a half cars, that would mean the existing or previously existing units were 272 vehicles and proposed 477. My request to the city council is that you look at the traffic and pedestrian safety in this general three-block area, which would be MacDill, Isabella, both sides of Isabella, between Bay Shore and probably all the way up to MacDill. And the reason for that is that we do not have a continuous sidewalk on both sides of Isabella. We do not have a continuous sidewalk on both sides of MacDill. If you even tried today, in about an hour, to make a right-hand turn off of Is, excuse me, to make a left-hand turn off of Isabella towards Bay Shore, or coming from the other direction on San Diego side towards MacDill, you couldn't. You'd be blindsided. So that in itself should be looked at. For instance, no left-hand turns at certain times. And, like I said, the sidewalks. So that's my comment. I would like you to consider looking at traffic and pedestrian safety in this three-block area because the number of units is more than doubling.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ms. McMillan. We need to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand and unmute yourself.
There we go.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am a resident of the Stovall on the side that will be negatively affected by the building the Ritz is constructing. 50% of the Stovall buildings, units are going to lose 80% of the total light and view of Bay Shore. This affects 20 residences. The Stovall was constructed in 2001 with an older construction design, so that the majority of our windows are on the north side of the building and will be directly blocked by the building that is being constructed. The Ritz has not consulted with the residents of the Stovall who are being negatively affected. Instead, they have attempted to maximize the number of units they can construct on the property versus losing one single townhome to help retain the value, views, and natural light of the 20 Stovall residents that are going to be affected. This is unfair to your neighbors. I would also add that the Aquatica is a lot further away, and I can look out my unit any time of the day or night, watch people pour themselves a cup of coffee, and see what type of clothing they're wearing, or if they have any on. I don't feel any residents of the Ritz or Stovall will enjoy this form of life. It is a reasonable and small ask that the Ritz be considerate to the longstanding taxpayers of the Stovall, who have paid in millions of dollars of property taxes already and followed the building requirements of the city without waivers. To ask that the Ritz move their building west, one townhome, approximately 50 feet, is not unreasonable. The Stovall was set back 35 feet from their property line. They followed the rules while the Ritz is setting back seven feet. The longtime residents of the Stovall are paying a big price. We are professionals. We are business owners, physicians, who have dedicated our lives and tax dollars to Tampa. We deserve better. We are only asking to be treated fairly. We're not against the Ritz project. It's just how it will affect us. There is an easy solution. For the Ritz and Stovall to be good neighbors, the Ritz needs, needs to move back 50 feet. That is the equivalent of one of their units, one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Dawn.
Very much. First of all, just to avoid any conflicts or any concerns of any ethical nature, I just want to mention that I serve on the Tampa Sports Authority with Councilman Goots, and we have had zero discussion on this specific issue.
Yeah, Councilman Goots, go ahead, sir.
Just for the record, he is correct. We have had no discussion of this issue.
Very good. All right, go ahead, sir.
Your individual legacies will be forever associated with this decision to change current practice of minimal spacing between high-rise towers on our Tampa Bay Bay Shore coastline. This practice was demonstrated by presentations from our Stovall owners at the first hearing to be at the range of 90 feet plus. I might also comment that the slide was shown earlier by the related group with the sightline perspective on it takes that sightline from the extreme northeast corner of the Stovall, which is an exterior porch for all the units. It is not taken to account the full length of, of the building. I did a quick and easy Google search and found many cities worldwide have codified these spacing requirements. Most that have one use 25 meters or 75 feet as a minimum spacing. This will not be a one-off project only approved. Inducing the spacing as requested creates precedent, which other developers will rapidly copy. Also noteworthy is it will be dramatically higher than any other tower on Bay Shore. 34 stories, I don't think there's anything close to it on Bay Shore. It will forever change the appearance of our treasured Tampa Bay coastline. So I ask each of you, is this change to our current practice that you want to have your name associated with? This precedent-setting decision will be a major part of your legacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, well, we have three speakers, Allison, Julia, and Lorraine. If you could please raise your right hands, we're going to swear you in.
I lost one. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good. Allison, you begin. Go ahead. You have three minutes. And unmute yourself. You're still muted. You're still muted. We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
She's self-muted.
Is it a microphone button? Does she have a microphone button?
How about now?
Yes, go ahead. Three minutes.
Okay. I see there's a different microphone. There's two microphones on there. I didn't notice that before. So thank you for all of your hard work today, councilmen, and I really appreciate this opportunity to speak. I want to express my concerns over the continuing loss of Tampa's tree canopy and request an effort by the developers to save as many of the 30 trees destined for removal as is possible. I was rather disappointed that it wasn't even mentioned by the developers in their initial comments, as if it's not important. And I feel that's something that we need to change, like that should be something that people want to do.
I didn't get the point.
Each healthy, established tree that is lost signifies a decline in the health, well-being, and climate security of our community. At the last Bay Oaks variance session, there was a request made by Sierra Club and myself to save nine trees that were identified based on health, size, and location on the site. And I've since had an opportunity to talk to the arborist, with the developer's arborist, to learn more about, in regards to his findings about the tree, about the tree, those trees. He also informed me that, as far as he knew at that time, no final decisions had been made about retaining any of the 30 trees. I appreciate the developers' current plans to replace, remove trees on their site with healthy, healthy same-species specimens. But I urge the developers to please make every effort to save any established oak possible as their plans are finalized. Saving trees reflects a positive commitment by developers to enhance the quality of life for their future residents and for Tampa's larger community. So I also think saving trees is the kind of action that needs to be encouraged and celebrated in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Julia Winston. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Julia Winston. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I am a resident of the Stovall. The past few years have brought great changes to the Bay Shore. Development has been paired with significant losses to the city of Tampa, our community, our people. We have lost the Colonnade, a beloved waterfront restaurant. No longer can residents bring their out-of-town guests to the Colonnade for fresh grouper or a basket of mini-muffin. We have lost Freedom Corner, where neighbors from all over the city could park U-Grip to access the Bay Shore, garner the patriotic gatherings that once took place on that prominent spot. We have lost the Grand Old Mansion. No longer will anybody walk by the property full of wonder about who lived there and the lives they led. And soon, we will lose the Bay Oaks Court, possibly the last affordable rental on the Bay Shore, where many young people rented their first apartment and formed a vibrant middle-class community. In the places these Tampa landmarks, we now have Barrage, Aquaticus, the sanctuaries, and coming through in the Ritz Park. I have no animus towards any of the developers or residents of these high-rises. How could I? I live in the Stovall. I support economic progress. But what I object to is unrestrained development that ignores the needs and character of the existing neighborhood. I applaud the related group's plan to preserve a maximum I applaud the related group's plan to preserve a magical historic fountain, improve walkability on Santiago Street, and create another park. I object to the site plan, which allows two towers to be excessively close together. I believe setting a precedent of no increase in setbacks as buildings grow taller is a dangerous one. I believe it increases the economic forces that will pressure other Bayshore landmarks to become the next high-rise: the Women's Club, the Garden Club, Bayshore Presbyterian Church, Bayside Community Church, Grand Older Homes, modest and priced condominiums, all will be powerful economic targets. I am asking you, our elected city council members, to vote no on the agenda of 2028 and require the related group to increase this setback. You will not be blocking development. This blocking will be failing. The related group will process. Tampa will lose its advantage. Other local stakeholders will benefit. By the end of today, you will be given pause on the development of the Bayshore properties inspired that will honor the Bayshore with diversity and unity and their neighbors. Please vote no and require that setbacks be increased as appropriate for other high-rises and towers.
Thank you very much. Just a moment, we have some popping. Next up is Lorraine Parino.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My name is Lorraine Parino. I live on Davis Island. I'm chair of the Davis Island Civic Association Tree Protection Committee, but today I'm here speaking for myself and for the trees. I'm a third-generation Tampa resident. I was born at the Centro Espanol Hospital. As a longtime Tampa resident, I'm sure I speak for many others when I say that we do not want Tampa to become another Singapore or New York City. Tampa has its own unique character and charm, and we want to keep it at a manageable size. There are already 27 luxury condos on Bayshore Boulevard. Four more are under construction. With the Ritz Carlton, the grand total would be 35. If Tampa City Council is determined to build yet one more luxury condo on Bayshore, then it should at least try to save the beautiful oak trees there from destruction. The related group wants to remove 80% of those oak trees. It promises to replace them with six-inch caliper trees. Sounds so easy, but it's impossible to replace 45-year-old oak trees with saplings. Oak trees are the workhorses of the tree kingdom. Those 28 trees are hard-working trees. For 45 years, those oak trees have been storing carbon dioxide, providing oxygen, storing water, and cooling down our very high heat index. It's going to take another 45 years for those saplings to replace the mighty oaks which are there now. Tampa's air quality is already a C minus. Cutting down those 28 oak trees will release all of the carbon dioxide they've stored for 45 years. The shade they provide will be gone, and there will be less oxygen but more flooding on Bayshore. Tampa is losing its tree canopy. Last month, a developer illegally destroyed 200 oak and pine trees on West Shore Boulevard. Last year, two dozen oak trees were illegally destroyed on Gandhi Boulevard. Another 16 oak trees were removed from a private lot on Bayshore. Tiny Davis Island loses approximately six trees a month because of the McMansions that are going up everywhere. We can't afford to lose those 28 oak trees. According to the Tampa Tree Map, Tampa has 214 empty tree planting sites. Last year, the Civic Association's Tree Committee and the Davis Island Garden Club submitted a proposal to the city's Parks Department to plant 100 native trees along the Davis Island Trail. But recent cuts to the Parks Department budget means there is little chance of approval. In exchange for approving this rezoning request, the developer should be required to take 10 or 12 of the healthiest of the Bay Oaks oak's property and plant them where they are needed, like Davis Island. This would be a win-win-win. A win for Tampa's residents, a win for the trees, and a win for the developer. Think of all the great publicity he will receive. As a Tampa native, I'm tired of seeing developers get rich by destroying Tampa's natural resources. If the related group has the vast wealth to buy the most prized real estate in Tampa and demolish a large and occupied middle-income apartment building, then it has the resources to replant the oak trees which they want to destroy in the process. Please, save those oak trees by replanting them while they will be protected and cherished as well they should be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Christina Costa.
We need to swear in the last.
Oh, Christina Costa and Stephen Gross, we need to have you raise your right hand, and we swear you in.
Please raise your right hand, Mr. Gross. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Christina Costa, if you'd like to begin, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, city council members. I'm Christina Costa, a city of Tampa resident. Today, I come to you on behalf of Walk Bike Tampa, a nonprofit advocacy organization working to make Tampa safe for walking and biking for people of all ages, all abilities, and in all parts of our city. At the invitation of the related group, on Sunday, November 1st, Walk Bike Tampa hosted a walk audit of the development site extending a quarter mile to the north, to the south, and to the east. Thirty individuals from a variety of the surrounding neighborhoods split into six teams and used our worksheet to assess sidewalks, streets, crossings both with and without traffic signals, and the overall conditions. Participants were also asked what improvements and amenities they would like to see in the area. With our city in such great need of safety improvements for active transportation and micromobility, and since few funds are readily available, we feel that major developments and willing developers must serve as a catalyst and strategic partners whenever possible. We appreciate that the related group reached out to us and that the company has committed to making improvements to streetscapes and connectivity, especially under the Selman Crosstown, which right now is very difficult to manage on foot or by bike, and virtually impossible if you have a stroller or you are wheelchair-bound. During our audits, one of our teams observed the stretch of Bay-to-Bay Boulevard from McDill to Bayshore Boulevard, an area this project fronts which is treacherous right now for everybody. Some portions have no sidewalk at all, just a dirt path. Specific improvements we would like to see as a result of this development are improved sidewalks where the property fronts Bay-to-Bay and McDill, and publicly accessible ground-level retail or restaurants where possible as a part of the development. This would make it a more active part of the neighborhood. It's important to note that we did not audit the area to the west of this because this is currently included in the city's Palmasia Commercial Corridor study. Our president-elect, Janet Cherberger, is already in contact with Mr. Randy Goers and his team. We will share our walk audit results with them and others to maximize the benefit of our efforts. Our findings are still being compiled, and we will develop a presentation over the next few weeks. We would like the opportunity to present that to you when possible, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Gross. You're muted, sir. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, yes. Hi, council members. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to present. I'm a condo board member and resident of the Stovall, directly south of the proposed related group development. I previously demonstrated to the council the factual information of the distance from the Stovall to the proposed related group Tower 1 at only 47 feet, which is less than half of the current distance between towers on Bayshore and clearly not in harmony with the current Bayshore standard. But I want to bring your attention to Section 27-136 outlining the zoning provisions. The project currently planned is not in harmony with the following provisions. Number five, encourage flexible land development which maximizes the preservation of natural resources and areas of unusual beauty or importance to the natural ecosystem which Bayshore is, and open space and green space. Number six, promote and encourage development where appropriate in location, character, and compatibility with the surrounding impacted neighborhoods. And number eight, promote architectural features and elements which complement the surrounding community and enhance the overall quality of the development. As a compromise to the complete redesign, moving of the tower west approximately 35 to 40 feet, offsetting it diagonally similar to the offset of the Hyde Park Tower development with elimination of only a single townhouse, provides an excellent and straightforward solution to the issues presented, and I just want to show you, I can't, I don't know if you can see it, it's hard to see, but I've looked at, I've done an analysis of the site plans and shown that it can very easily be shifted, and there is clear sightline from the moved structure to the downtown area, very clearly not obstructing the sightlines as the towers move to the downtown. So, this change opens up most of the north Stovall windows, addressing the proximity, privacy, and sightline concerns while preserving the sightlines from the proposed tower to the Hillsborough Bay as well as to downtown. It obviates the need for a complete redesign of the Tower 1. Green space would be increased, and trees saved as well. As an added benefit to the related tower residents, the increased setback would greatly reduce Bayshore road noise. With Bayshore getting busier, this would be a significant improvement. And additionally, the increased distance from the bay would mitigate potential flooding as sea levels rise, for instance, as has been clearly seen in Miami. We do not oppose all the development along Bayshore. The city and residents can benefit from properly managed development, both financially and aesthetically. We are pleased that the related group is looking to bring to Tampa a beautiful condo, and again, we don't oppose it per se, merely in its current inception. The proposed change does not alter the elegant architectural design of Related Tower 1.
Thank you very much.
By moving the tower west, 27-136 requirements can be met.
Thank you very much.
Providing a win-win for all parties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment that's registered and online?
I do want to announce that we have approximately seven registered speakers that did not log onto the webinar. We have one person, Nancy Nguyen. She is logged on, however, she's not able to be elevated as a panelist because she does not have video access. She was having issues with her computer. She did email me that. And we have two that's on, but they haven't turned on their video, and that is Taylor Ralph and Robert Bennett.
There's Taylor. And do we have, the other one was?
Robert Bennett.
Mr. Bennett, there he is. Okay, Mr. Ralph, Mr. Bennett, if you could raise your right hands and unmute yourself, we're going to swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Ralph. You have three minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ralph or Mr. Ralph?
Mr. Ralph, Taylor Ralph.
My apologies.
We can see you, but unmute yourself, sir. No? All right, we'll go to Mr. Bennett first, and then we'll go back to Mr. Ralph. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett, you have three minutes.
Here we go.
I'll start the clock.
Mr. Chair, who would you like to go first?
You, sir. Mr. Bennett, Robert Bennett.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Rob Bennett. I am a resident with my wife Tracy at the Stovall. I'm here this afternoon speaking maybe somewhat differently than many of the people that you've heard with concerns about this development. Many of those people who are much more articulate and likely longer-term residents of the Tampa area than Tracy and I are. We moved here about five years ago from Eastern Canada to be part of one of Tampa's largest businesses. So as a businessman, I'm very focused on development and encourage development and celebrate the development that's happening in Tampa. The development of this building is not an issue with us. It's the fact and the technicalities that have been expressed before about the location of the building and the impact that it will have on the residents of the Stovall and the inconsistencies it represents in terms of the development of the Bayshore area. When Tracy and I moved here, we found Tampa to be a beautiful city. It's an absolute privilege to be able to live here, and South Tampa and the Bayshore area in particular has a character that is special. And this city and that area are special because of the history of the work that's been done by your colleagues who have sat in the seats with the responsibilities that you hold today as they upheld standards and criteria that ensured that the city was developed in a responsible manner that respected the needs of existing residents while at the same time encouraging and successfully creating a growing vibrant city. But that was done with standards, and the compromising of those standards leads to a path that we can't go back on once this decision is made. And I'm afraid that the character of Bayshore and then subsequently many other areas of the city will be negatively impacted by compromising on the standards that have been upheld by your colleagues in the past and that have created such a wonderful environment for us all. Again, the people at the Stovall, Tracy and I, are not asking for this development to be stopped at all. We think it's a wonderful project. We only request that it be positioned properly so that it reflects the consistent character of the rest of the Bayshore area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ralph, Taylor Ralph, have you unmuted yourself?
I believe so.
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Taylor Ralph, 3703 West San Juan, Tampa, Florida, here in support of this project. I'm born and raised in Tampa, have lived in the neighborhood here off of Bay-to-Bay and McDill for 12 years now. Actively worked to make Bay-to-Bay safer thanks to the help of Councilman Carlson and all of you as well. And this project is very consistent with what's going on on Bayshore. And not only that, I think that the development team has shown a willingness to listen to the community, try to design with intent, and make decisions that don't negatively impact its neighbors. Obviously, I think no matter where you put this tower, there's going to be some concerns from the neighbors to the south and to the north, but I believe that this project is consistent with the development that is going on on Bayshore and will continue to. And I really want to say that I applaud the team for, the development team, for taking a step forward and saying, it's not just about our property, we're also willing to consider improving the underpass of the Crosstown and turning that into a vibrant public space that the community can use. As you may know, we've been working, trying to get a sidewalk on the south side of Bay-to-Bay across the CSX tracks and under the Crosstown for some time, and I think that with their help and with the community and Neighborhood Association and Walk Bike Tampa's help, we can create a very innovative public park underneath the Crosstown. And I understand the issues with the trees as well, but I believe they've addressed that by putting in, you know, larger tree calipers and trying to replace these trees that, you know, will eventually grow into large trees as well. So not only do I think that this project's consistent and forward-looking for the Tampa of tomorrow, I believe that the related group and Ritz Carlton plan to install a project that everyone can be proud of, that will continue to build on the momentum in this commercial district, that is, building momentum with Chill Bros. Ice Cream and Buddy Brew and Starbucks and counterculture right across the street. So I'm here to support the project, and I know that the development team will continue to work with the community to make a, develop a project that we can all be proud of.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have anybody else here for public comment that is online and able to? No?
Nope, that would conclude.
Do we have any questions from council members before I go to rebuttal?
Mr. Chair, I'll wait to address Mr. Truitt when he comes up.
All right, Mr. Truitt, I will start the clock.
If we can, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If we can take the questions before the rebuttal.
All right, Councilman Goots.
Mr. Truitt, I thank you for being here today, sir. And again, I know the related group's done a lot of work in our Tampa Bay area, and I'm proud of some of what they've been doing so far. I got to meet the president of the company last week, I think his name is George, if I'm not mistaken. It seemed like he's doing good work here in Tampa for us and also with the art projects... It seemed like he's doing good work here in Tampa for us and also with the art projects that's going on as well. The people are miles away, coming by and looking at that design at my old alma mater at the high rise, so I'm very grateful for that design and some of the artwork he committed to bring some African-American history to that project.
Mr. Goode, I'm sorry to interrupt, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. With regard to this meeting that you've just discussed, certainly this project-
Has nothing to do with that, sir.
Okay, and the relevance of your discussion about the meeting of that gentleman does not factor into your decision?
No conversation at all relative to this project, sir.
But relative to your ability to be fair and impartial-
I can be impartial.
...and be judgy on the evidence that you have in this hearing-
That's correct, sir. I was just really thanking for the project, the artwork that the citizens are seeing, basically it.
Okay, but that is totally separate and-
Correct.
...does not have any effect on this hearing.
No effect at all, sir.
Thank you.
My question, Mr. Gardner, as it relates to, I heard two of the citizens that are in that Stovall building talked about, I guess Ms. McMillan, Mr. Grills, and Ms. McMillan was talking about the one condo unit, the size, that could possibly very, really fit into this project. Mr. Grills also talked about that kind of situation as well, I'm just wondering, had your architect looked into what they were saying about the one condo unit that can make the project move as to help all, everyone involved in this thing? So I'm just wondering, was that taken into consideration, or did we think about that at all?
So, Mr. Goode, I appreciate the question again. Truitt Gardner, four-hundred North Ashley Drive, that was actually the second point I was going to cover in my rebuttal. And with this, when globally, when you have projects of this scale and of this impact, and we feel confident it's going to have nothing but a positive impact for the city of Tampa, it's never easy, and we're never going to make everybody happy. But when you look at this, really, I don't think anybody's arguing for us moving to the east closer to bayshore, and we've designed this sensitively to pull it away from bayshore further than what Stovall has, and so it would be in line with that. So then your options are moving to the west, we also heard, I believe it was Mr. DeFosse that said, lower it, and then the third was move it to the north. So let's talk about that. Moving it to the west, and our arborist Ricky Patarica's here, Tyler Hudson's here, he's going to speak as well, and then we have Mr. Boers, but there's a nice canopy of oak trees to the west which would be negatively impacted if we moved it to the west, so we felt it was important to keep that canopy. So that's the western move. On top of that, just like Stovall doesn't want us to be in front of them, we don't want to be behind them either, so we don't want to negatively impact our views, so there's that. But overriding that are the trees. Secondly, Mr. DeFosse said, lower it. What lowering it does is make the building squatier and longer, which would only impact more views. And then we heard, move it to the north. Move it to the north destroys the shaded avenue that we're trying to create along Santiago Street and pushes this building closer to Aquatica, so instead of the residents from Stovall being here, we probably have the residents of Aquatica being here. And so I would just say, the testimony that was given was not by experts, it's by people that live in the Stovall, and I would rely on the experts that's related, and Aquatica who have, under their resume, hundreds of condominium towers, they feel that the siting of this building is not only appropriate, but it's sensitive, and as Mr. Hammond said, it only blocks twenty to thirty percent of their three-hundred-and-sixty percent view. And as I stated at the last hearing, the law on this is clear, you are not entitled to view in the state of Florida and across the United States. If you want to view, you buy the view. And with that being said, and I'm not trying to be cold or calculated because they have been sensitive about it, but this is just one of those situations where we're not going to make everybody happy with where this building on bayshore is sited, but I think they have analyzed it to the fullest extent possible, and they have chosen the best location for that building. And Tyler is going to speak after me, and he's going to talk about a conversation that we had with the Stovall people as well, and I think that'll, that'll add some light into this issue as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from council? All right, Mr. Truitt, if you, or Mr. Gardner, if you'd like to begin your rebuttal, I'll start then.
Well, Mr. Goode's helped me eliminate one of my three points, I'm down to two.
Great.
We appreciate the fervor on both sides of this. Again, projects of this scale and of this nature are never easy, and there were a lot of misstatements that were made, I'm not going to sit here and address all of them, but there are two that I wanted to address, or three, one was the siting, which has been addressed, but the other two are, one, that we're maximizing the number of units and intensifying the site, and that just is woefully untrue. As far as maximization, we have an R-50 comprehensive plan category, given the size of this site, we could be asking for two-hundred-and-thirty-two units, we're asking for one-hundred-and-eighty. Next, we are intensifying the site, and what comes with that is typically additional traffic. We are not intensifying the site, we are negligibly, negligibly, from a unit standpoint, there are currently a hundred-and-seventy-six apartment units, again, this apartment was built in the nineteen-seventies, has passed its useful life, and what we're requesting is one-hundred-and-eighty condos, so a net of four, and, but condos generate less traffic than apartments, which was why the woman stated no traffic study was needed, because our impact is actually less. So that handles maximization and intensifying the site. Then the last point I wanted to make is this assertion that was made by a couple people that we are not paying for the impact of the development. Again, we will pay for all of the impact fees, we will substantially increase the tax base, and then Related is absolutely committed, it can't be a condition of the site plan, but, Mr. Goode, you mentioned the project that you saw in the public art there, they are committed to public art at this property, so not only to make it more pedestrian-friendly, but to make this whole bayshore area more beautiful. And with that, I'll turn things over to Tyler Hudson.
Good afternoon, council, Tyler Hudson, four-hundred North Ashley Drive. First, just want to note that we've had a couple missing speakers here due to some of the time constraints, you'll note that we had about twenty supportive speakers, but some folks could not be here this afternoon. I want to talk about what's changed since the last time we were here. I mean, one thing is that Tampa won the Stanley Cup, and then the other thing is that Related has continued to have a significant amount of community engagement since the last reading. Not only has Bike Walk Tampa had the opportunity to come out and do the bike audit that was discussed, there's been meetings with the Palmasia Neighborhood Association about the work that's been done on Bay to Bay and is being planned for Bay to Bay, but we have continued to talk to the folks at the Stovall condominium. Mr. Vaca, who represented the residents at the last hearing, we've had several conversations with him, Related made a very comprehensive and costly to them offer about a way to mitigate some of their concerns. The offer was to take away two of the three southern-facing windows on the property to pay for expanded mitigation for some of the construction noise and dust issues that are going to come up. That offer was rejected, and we respect their decision on that one thing, that is a big concern of Stovall, also is the pilings. Just for the benefit of the Stovall folks and for this council, we're going to use a drilled method, that's going to be different than what happened across from Old City Hall, it caused some noise vibration issues. Again, that's not an offer, that is something that Related is committed to. On trees, there was a point made at some point about protecting the canopy, which you all, you are guardians of, but I don't think there's a more ardent defender of the city's tree canopy than Bill Boers and your natural resources staff, and you recall at the first reading for this, discussion about all the positive impacts that this project is going to make for the canopy in this area, which we believe constitutes certainly substantial and competent evidence. You know, finally, to Truitt's point, a project of this ambition and scope is going to generate a lot of passion, I think you've seen that at both, both readings. But there is nothing fundamentally new from what you've heard at the first reading. There is new, there's no new competent substantial evidence, more reiterations of what you heard back on October first. We believe that we have met our burdens, both as to the waivers and to the rezoning to PD, and respectfully and humbly ask for your support again, like last time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Councilman Viera, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I know that this has no bearing whatsoever on the matter at hand, so I probably shouldn't ask it, but what I, that I will. I didn't know if y'all could opine on, and I think you guys had mentioned this in the first hearing, if memory serves me right, but what process and guidance and assistance and engagement there's been with the present residents who are there right now? I believe you guys had spoken about that in the first hearing, just for our information. Mr. Shelby, would that be, before they answer that, would that be an improper inquiry to engage on at this time?
Well, my, my thought is twofold. Number one is, it was raised at the prior hearing, if you recall, so that-
Yeah.
...testimony is cumulative, that's number one. And number two is, I don't believe any of that is specifically relevant to the specific code requirements, because there are no code requirements to that-
I appreciate that, then so as to not sully the record on issues that wouldn't be directly relevant to code, et cetera, I'll withdraw the question then, so disregard it. Thank you.
Anybody else on council with any questions? Comments? Can I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second, motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Viera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, for item number seventy-nine, Councilmember Viera, would you like to take this?
I will, Mr. Chair, thank you, sir. I move file REZ-dash-twenty-dash-three-eight, a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three-one-zero-five Bay Oaks Court in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification RM thirty-five residential multifamily to PD plan development residential multifamily, residential single-family attached, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode and Carlson voting no and Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. Before we go on to item eighty-two, I had mentioned it earlier, if we could take up item seventy-eight, there aren't any registered speakers for it. It hopefully should not take any, shouldn't take very long. Item number seventy-eight.
That is REZ-twenty-dash-thirty-five, five-five-five Northwest Shore Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the applicant is Mechanic.
Is he online?
Do we have Mr. Mechanic online?
Yes, give me one second. He's on, he just needed to turn on his camera.
Mr. Mechanic, if you can turn your camera on and unmute yourself, we'll swear you in. Mr. Mechanic, if you're on, please turn your camera on.
He's still logged on, just not responding.
Okay, you're up, just letting you know.
There he is, all right, unmute yourself, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Mechanic, and we'll swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Great, all right, item number seventy-eight.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Mechanic, three-zero-five South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We received first reading approval with unanimous vote, and we're just here to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Any questions for the applicants, petitioners? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy-eight, REZ-dash-twenty-dash-thirty-five? Anybody in the chambers, anybody at the kiosk, anybody registered online?
No, sir.
No, hearing none, can I get a motion to close?
So move.
A motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? All right, Councilmember Goode, would you mind reading item number seventy-eight?
File number REZ-dash-twenty-dash-thirty-five, substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of fifty, five-five-five Northwest Shore Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD plan development hotel or motel to PD plan development hotel or motel, providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. We'll go to item number eighty-two, and the reason is because Councilman Dingfelder was not here, and I didn't want to lose any other council members, and then we'll go back to the beginning of the hearings and go from there. Item number eighty-two, REZ-twenty-dash-fifty-nine. Please raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
Thank you, council.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm going to use that one right there. Good afternoon, council, nice to see everyone in person, appreciate your time. Fran Reed, Domain Homes, five-seven-zero-three South MacDill Avenue, here to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, do we have anybody in the public here in the chambers that wishes to speak on item number eighty-two?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody at the kiosk that is willing, or wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody registered wishing to speak?
Not for this item.
All right, can I get a motion to close?
So move.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, Councilmember Carlson, would you mind reading item number eighty-two?
Sure. File, file number REZ-twenty-dash-fifty-nine, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of five-five-zero-one North Fifteenth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification SHRS Seminole Heights residential single-family to SHPD Seminole Heights plan development residential single-family detached, providing effective date.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
No.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
Motion carried with Goode and Miranda voting no and Dingfelder being absent.
All right, thank you very much, sir, and I like those, I like those chops. Very nice. All right, item number sixty-four, item number sixty-four is E-twenty-twenty-dash-eight, item number sixty-four. Do we have an applicant registered?
This is a city, I meant, initiated, so if you can, you can just open it for the public here.
Do we have anybody here for public comment on item number sixty-four? Anybody at the kiosk?
No, sir.
Anybody registered online?
No, sir.
All right, may I have a motion to close, public here?
So move.
A motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Citro, would you mind taking item number sixty-four?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File number E-twenty-twenty-dash-eight, CH-fifteen, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance to the city of Tampa, Tampa, Florida, relating to, am I on sixty-four?
Yeah, sixty-four.
Okay, thank you very much. Related to parking meter relegations, excuse me, regulations, making revisions to the city of Tampa Code of Ordinances, chapter fifteen, Parking, Amending Article Two, Regulations Permits, Penalties, Division Two, Parking Meter Regulations, Section fifteen-dash-eighty-one, Hours' Operations for Parking Meters, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Effective Date.
Second.
We have motion for Councilman Citro, second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number sixty-five. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-five, file number CIP and CIS twenty-twenty? Anybody at the kiosk?
Nope.
Anybody registered?
Nope.
May I have a motion to close, item number sixty-five? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, Councilmember Miranda, if you would not mind reading item number sixty-five.
No, sir, thank you. Item number sixty-five, file number CIP and CIS twenty-twenty, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, Capital Improvement Section by replacing the Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects with the Capital Improvement Schedule of Project for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Miranda, second for Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number sixty-six. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-six? Do we have anybody at the kiosk?
We have one applicant, I'm gonna pull him over now.
All right.
Oh, there he is.
If you would raise your right hand, Mr. Doherty, and we will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Doherty.
Good evening, good afternoon, pardon me, Mr. Chair, members of the council, I really don't have anything else to add to the staff report, just that we are in concurrence with staff's recommendation and are here for any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for the gentlemen? Hearing none, and I already asked if there was any public comment, once again, is there any public comment on sixty-six?
No, Chair.
All right, may I have a motion to close, item number sixty-six? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Viera, would you mind reading item number sixty-six?
Yes, sir, I move, Mr. Chair, I move a subsequent ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance amending the Imagine two thousand forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at twenty-one-oh, twenty-nine-oh-one West Swan Avenue, twenty-six-eighteen West Elian Street, twenty-six-nineteen West Elian Street, from public semi-public P slash S P, community commercial thirty-five, C C thirty-five, community mixed-use thirty-five, C M U thirty-five and residential twenty, R twenty-two, public semi-public S slash P, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. Item number sixty-seven, do we have somebody on the line for sixty-seven?
Yes, Mr. Mark Bentley.
Mr. Bentley, if you could raise your right hand and unmute yourself, we will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, my name's Mark Bentley, four-oh-one East Jackson Street, Tampa, three-three-six-oh-two, I represent the applicant, it's Capco LLC, and this is a plan amendment in War City, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for the gentlemen? Hearing none, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number sixty-seven?
No, Chair.
Nope, all right, anybody at the kiosk?
No, sir.
All right, can I, motion closed?
Motion to close.
Motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Who was next, Councilmember Carlson, sixty-seven?
Sure. I'd like to move file number PA twenty-zero-three, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at the northwest corner of East Palm Avenue and North Seventeenth Street from residential fifty, R fifty, and right away, R O W two, urban mixed-use sixty, U M U sixty, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
All right, next item is item number sixty-eight, we do not have a, an applicant here, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number sixty-eight? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Anybody registered online?
No, sir.
All right, any questions from council, if not, a motion to close?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Citro, I believe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, Councilman Citro, if you would not mind taking item number sixty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, file number PA twenty-zero-five, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Image, Imagine, excuse me, twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at thirty-seven-ten North Poplar Avenue, and otherwise known as Freedom Park, from residential ten, R ten, to residential open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, item number sixty-nine, we do not have a applicant, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at the kiosk?
Mr. Chairman, that is a, I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt, that is, I guess, when you say there's no applicant, is the city initiated, privately initiated, I'm just curious, I don't know.
This was all initiated by a city.
Oh, it's the parks.
Yeah, it's the parks to make them parks.
Thank you for that clarification, forgive me for interrupting.
No problem. Anybody in the public? Anybody online? All right, may I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilmember Miranda, item number sixty-nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, file number PA twenty-oh-six, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Image twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at six-eleven West Indiana Avenue, otherwise known as Kelvin Taylor Park, from residential ten, R dash ten, to recreational open space, R slash O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, roll call.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much, item number seventy, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy? Anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
No, sir.
Nope, all right, can I get a motion to close if there's no questions? Motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Viera, would you mind taking item number seventy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I will, I hereby move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at fifty-two-oh-two and fifty-two-oh-nine North Twelfth Street, and otherwise known as Giddens Park, from residential ten, R ten, to recreational open state, space, R slash O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
All right, next up is item number seventy-one, more of the same, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy-one?
No, sir.
Is there anybody at the kiosk? Anyone registered to speak?
No.
May I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilman Goode, if you would not mind reading item number seventy-one?
File number PA two-zero-zero-eight, substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at twelve-hundred East Lake Avenue, and otherwise known as Reagan Park, from residential ten, R ten, to recreational open space, R dash six, O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number seventy-two. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy-two?
No.
Do we have anybody at the kiosk?
Motion to close.
Do we have anybody registered?
No, sir.
No, we have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, we have a second, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, Councilmen, any objection? Councilman Carlson, item number seventy-two.
Sure, I'd like to move file number PA twenty-zero-nine, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at ten-ten North Franklin Street, and otherwise known as Herman Massey Park, from Central Business District, C B D, to recreational open space, R O S, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second, Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
All right, next up is item number seventy-three. Item number seventy-three, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilmember Citro, item number seventy-three?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, file number PA twenty-ten, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at thirteen-fourteen Scott Street, and otherwise known as Tampa Park Plaza, from community mixed-use thirty-five to, excuse me, community mixed-use thirty-five, M U thirty-five, C M U thirty-five, to recreational space, R O S, providing for repeal, repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, Viera, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder? Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Dingfelder being absent.
All right, item number seventy-four, I believe we have two individuals that are registered to come online, if they would, there they are together, if you would please raise your right hand, and we will swear you in, make sure you please unmute yourself.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Council, Kami Corbett for the Record, one-oh-one East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite thirty-seven-hundred, I'm here with my law partner, Scott McLaren, and we are here to answer any questions should you have them, and we would reserve any other time for rebuttal if necessary.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? All right, I know we have three registered speakers, if they would come on board, and we'll swear them in, they'll each have three minutes. And those people are Carol Ann Bennett, Stephanie Pointer, and Jean Strawmeyer. All right, I see one, Stephanie and Jean, if you could turn on your cameras and unmute yourselves, and we'll swear everybody in and begin.
Stephanie's unmuted, she just need to turn, there she is.
All right, we have two, do we have a third?
Jean is there, she just has not turned on her camera.
Jean, if you could turn your camera on?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Carol Ann Bennett, go ahead.
No, 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 we want to be in order. First Jean.
Okay, I have Carol Ann, Stephanie, and Jean in order, who wants to go first?
Jean, please.
All right, Jean, if you could.
First, I would like to have just an extra two seconds, if you don't mind, because we have been on here since nine o'clock AM.
Me too, please turn your camera on, please turn your camera on so we can see you, we have to see you.
I can, oh, share my webcam, oh, oops, sorry.
Okay.
It was on, but I.
We have to swear you in. We didn't see you on camera. Just raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, solemnly.
And what did you say about extra time?
I would just like a few extra seconds. I mean, we've been here since nine o'clock. I'm literally on vacation.
That's, that's fine.
If you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
So, just before I start, Mr. Goode is. Mr. Goode, I like your goatee. It looks nice. It really looks nice. It's really refined.
Thank you, Mr. Strawmeyer. Thank you.
You had a fan club.
So, anyway, okay.
We're all going to come to goatee this evening.
Alright, my name is Jean Strawmeyer, President of Interbay South of Kansas Civic Association. I'm here individually and to speak for others who cannot participate. This very proceeding today should not go forward and is in direct conflict with Florida Statute seventy point fifty-one as follows. The magistrate failed to determine within forty-five days whether the actions of the city were reasonable or not. If they were determined to be reasonable, then Florida Land Use Environmental Dispute Resolution Act, LUDRA, mandates that a special magistrate issue a recommendation of the local government's decision remain undisturbed. See Statute seventy point fifty-one nineteen subsection A and page eight, third paragraph of LUDRA. There was no decision within forty-five days nor any evidence of extensions. If the governmental entity does not act within forty-five days, the recommendation is deemed rejected. See Statute seventy fifty-one twenty-one subsection C and page nine, paragraph three of LUDRA. I like saying that. If there was an extension, was it approved by city council? And if not, then who approved it? We request confirmation of any such extension in accordance with the requirements of the Florida statutes. The proceedings of this project exceeded the required one hundred and sixty-five days, again with no evidence of extensions. See Florida Statute seventy point fifty-one subsection twenty-three. I'm not a lawyer, but anyway, this is coordinated. We calculated the proceedings have lasted two hundred and thirty days minus an approved extension of seven days. Based on the vote finding specifically, this request of resolution should be denied. If in the alternative city council votes and the proceedings move forward, then the project should be denied because the applicant failed to meet its burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence that the development is consistent with the land use code and Tampa Comprehensive Plan and in the following ways failed to demonstrate the following: that the development could not be built within the current zoning district as per land use one point two hundred and twenty-eight; that the plan development request was for any other purpose than waiving established land development regulations in conflict with land use policy eight point thirteen point three; that the development is consistent with Tampa Comprehensive Plan in established South Tampa and defined as an area of stability, hence no significant changes in development pattern is consistent with TCP, pages three and four; that the development is consistent with Tampa Comprehensive Plan in South Tampa, which specifically states that residents would be resistant to any encroachment of the established and stable nature of the limited space as well as joint reference in pages fourteen and fifteen; that regulations established under the applicable single-use zoning districts were used in review of the development which is adjacent to residential uses in conflict with zoning district land use designation matrix included with pages one twelve, one twenty-eight, third, one thirty-one of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Am I on the right foot? Okay. That the development needs the criteria of plan development is defined within three fifty-one of TCP. The development site plan does not meet purpose of planned development rezoning as required by City of Tampa Land Use Sections twenty-seven through one thirty-six and twenty-seven through two twenty-six. And these applicants failed to identify or provide any competent substantial evidence demonstrating that you need condition, design flexibility, plan diversification, or integration of users, or show that the request was made for purposes other than circumventing the requirements of Sections twenty-seven to one fifty-six C in conflict with land use policy eight point one three point three; nor was it demonstrated that requirements of section twenty-seven through one fifty-six B were used as a guide in conflict with zoning district land use within the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Lastly, the application should be denied in that it conflicts with the mission of McDill or Forest Base and encroaches on the harmony that we have had with McDill for over seventy-five years. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Pointer.
No, I'm next.
Alright, Carol Ann Bennett, then Stephanie Pointer, then the legal department.
At the first reading, Ms. Johnson-Velez and Judge Case said at the start of mediation, the public was able to provide candid testimony, that they listened carefully to all sides and to the concerns of the public, and the process was richer because of public input. They also said they invited extra people above their requirements. I had no idea what they were talking about. It was as if we attended two different mediations. We were allowed to hear attorneys present their cases, which was great, but that was all. We were invited to listen, only to listen. We were given no opportunity to speak or to present our concerns and input until after the decisions were made. At the first mediation, I was dismayed that Ms. Johnson-Velez didn't say that a previous city council denied a rezoning in twenty eighteen, but I had no chance to speak. I was so desperate and frustrated that during the hearing, I was ordered to sending her an email labeled urgent because I had no other way to communicate. Later, Ms. Pointer and I were isolated in an empty Zoom room for hours. Eventually, Judge Case came on and said it wasn't going to conclude that day and we could go. I asked him if we would get to voice our concerns and he said, "No, just no." I was shocked into silence, but Ms. Pointer wasn't going to be deterred and said, "Can I ask you a question?" Then I asked if he knew that a previous city council had denied a rezoning. He did not. That little Q and A was the sum total of our input and participation. That was it. On the second mediation date, the city attorneys did a great job and I was very happy that among other things, they said that you were the second city council to deny this. But again, we had no input. Councilman Goode, at the first reading, you were obviously concerned about whether the public was truly part of the mediation and could make suggestions. You asked whether our concerns were looked into and put into this process. I assume you asked this because the negative public comments conflicted with the assurances that the public was engaged and it caused you confusion. Well, I was confused too. I was also hopping up and down and yelling at my computer. I think your spidey sense was talking to you. You ought to be commended on your instincts. They were spot on. The judge's report is dated July tenth. The only opportunity we had to voice our concerns was August fifth. Why bother? We could not present our case until after the verdict and sentence had been handed down. So, no, Councilman Goode, the public was not an active participant. We could not make suggestions. Our concerns were not listened to or considered and although Ms. Pointer and I got invitation letters, the people who donated minutes to me at the original hearing in February, who spoke through me, they were not invited and they wanted to be. Maybe they did invite extra people, but I have no idea who they were. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Pointer. You're muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. You know, these ladies have already laid out a whole bunch of stuff and I just want to speak to a couple little things. First of all, I'd like to point out that, I want to point out to the developer comments as they were written. First of all, in every mediation that we've ever attended, we were told that it was confidential. Yet, Ms. Corbett pointed out that I gave incorrect information to my neighbors within a thousand feet of the property. And I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, are we supposed to share the information for mediation or not? And honestly, I've never seen anything in writing about that mediation and wasn't even a hundred percent positive. It was a casual conversation where somebody called us on the phone and said, "Hey, this is what we did," but nothing in writing. My Facebook page is one hundred percent public. I am completely transparent. I own the property within a thousand feet of that property. I want you to know that I have the same rights. I have the developer. I have my First Amendment rights and I can say whatever I want on my Facebook page and there's no reason why I can't. I also walked around to everyone within a thousand feet of that property and handed out flyers. I received phone call after phone call after phone call from folks in their seventies, eighties, and nineties who weren't able to attend the meeting. And so, when we leave out that population, we're just wronged. And I know I'm forgetting something. Bottom line is that we still don't want it. It still sucks and we don't like it. And these ladies did a great job laying it all out in a nice, pretty package, but we didn't get a voice and don't let anybody tell you any different. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else registered online for public comment for this item?
No, sir, that's.
Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak here? Anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody from our legal department that wishes to address anything that needs to come on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask that, sir.
Oh, yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Susan Johnson-Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So, I was trying to take notes as the comments were being made and so I will try to address each one of them and then I'm happy to answer any further questions that you might have. So, under the LUDRA statute, persons who are entitled to participate and be notified of the LUDRA proceedings or the fact that they have been requested are those, are property owners who are adjacent to the property as well as anyone who provided testimony or evidence at the public hearing on the rezoning request or development order request and also asked to receive notice of any LUDRA proceeding. And so, because most people don't know that they must request to receive notice of LUDRA proceeding, what our office routinely does is consult with the applicant, in this case, Ms. Corbett, and ask if they would agree to expand the notice to include not only those who appeared at a prior public hearing and requested notice of LUDRA proceedings, but even those who didn't request. Anybody who appeared at your original public hearing on the original rezoning request were included in our notification of the LUDRA proceedings. And so, it is more expansive than what the statute requires, but it is what we routinely do so that we can capture anybody who may not be aware of the statutory requirement. So, we did do that in this case. Anyone who is invited and who then later opts to participate in the LUDRA proceedings, it's important to note, is not a party to the proceeding. Their participation is limited to being able to comment on any alternative to the development that the city and the applicant are able to agree upon. And so, I believe the speakers did acknowledge that on August fifth, as I mentioned at the first hearing on this matter, we did have a meeting with the magistrate and the folks who elected to participate, Ms. Bennett and Ms. Pointer, for the specific purpose of getting their comments to the alternative development proposal. So, that was done in this case. And then, as far as the statutory timeframes that were noted, the parties did enter into a stipulation to the extension of LUDRA deadlines on October twentieth of twenty twenty, wherein we agreed to extend the statutory deadlines until such time as city council could complete its consideration of the special magistrate's written recommendation. So, if you'll recall, at the August, I'm sorry, October eighth hearing, what occurred was that you all considered the special magistrate's written recommendation, which contained the alternative development proposal. So, you considered that as part of your hearing and then you had a vote on whether you wanted to accept the recommendation, modify the recommendation, or reject the recommendation. You all voted to accept the recommendation and so the next step, under the statute, is then that you must proceed to implement the recommendation. In this case, because it is a rezoning request, implementing the recommendation would mean that you would adopt an ordinance rezoning the property pursuant to the agreed settlement. So, after you accepted the recommendation on October eighth, you then proceeded to first reading on the ordinance and today's hearing is for the purpose of concluding the implementation of the settlement by having the second reading of the ordinance and final rezoning of the property.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the legal?
You're very welcome.
Ms. Velez, if you just repeat the process one more time for me, during the mediation process with the magistrates as it relates to the property owners or adjacent residents being a part of the process or having an opportunity to be a part of the process or just being there as a part of the process? I want to make sure I got it clear, so just for now.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to. Sure, of course. The statute requires notice be provided to adjacent properties as well as any person who either provided testimony or evidence at the hearing, the original hearing, and who has requested to be notified of a request for a LUDRA proceeding. Because most people who provide testimony at rezoning hearings are not aware of that statutory requirement, that they request to be notified of a LUDRA proceeding, the city routinely will work with the applicant to try to get their agreement. In this case, the applicant did agree to allow us to send notice to people who provided testimony at the original hearing but who did not request to be notified of the LUDRA proceeding. And so, we went a step beyond and expanded the list to anyone who appeared at your hearing. So, anyone who appeared at the original hearing on this application back in February of this year received notice that there had been a request for a LUDRA proceeding and were advised that they could participate in the LUDRA proceeding if they provided notice to us within twenty-one days of receiving the letter. So, that's how Ms. Bennett and Ms. Pointer were participants. But it's also important to note that participants under the statute are not parties, meaning that they don't get to provide input. Well, they are not parties in the sense that they don't participate necessarily in the negotiations, but their role and ability to participate is limited to commenting on alternative development proposals that the city and the applicant agree to.
Is that in writing when you send that out? So, residents can know they're not a part of the negotiation process or mediations? Or we just send a letter out saying you can come, but they don't have any information on what their role is?
Well, that is explained at the LUDRA proceeding.
So, the magistrate explains that or does?
Magistrate does. Yes, the magistrate explains that, yes.
I won't go into today, but I'd like to have a conversation about that in the future because if people are showing up, I mean, I wouldn't want to show up to a meeting if I'm, I'm not going to be involved in the meeting. I'm just, you know, just wasting my time in my opinion. And I get there and the judge tells me, "Well, you can't talk." Well, I just took a whole day off or could have done something else. So, I'd like to have a conversation with you and Legal about that in the future in reference to that, giving the citizens a little bit more information on what their role is.
Sure, I'd be happy to, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? Did I ask for public comment here in the chambers, just to be sure? Anybody for public comment at the kiosk? Okay, applicants, rebuttal if you wish.
Just briefly, if we could, if I could share my screen, I'd just like to remind council what the site plan is that you're being asked to consider.
There we go. Go ahead.
And just real briefly again, to remind you what we talked about at the first reading, which is the special magistrate did recommend approval of the settlement and the site plan. The settlement site plan modifies and enhances compatibility and consistency and the planning commission staff found the site plan consistent and compatible and land development coordination found the rabbi's site plan consistent. Again, our development proposal, our alternative development proposal is a reduction to two hundred and five units, which is the reduction in estimated thirty-five units. We reduced the stories from three and four stories to three and two stories. We increased buffering and screening and we increased the landscaping to address the compatibility issues. And the point that Ms. Pointer made about Facebook and being able to speak to whomever she'd like to speak to, I absolutely agree with her. She is a vocal advocate. She's an effective advocate. My concern and statement at the last hearing was that she was informing the community that there were four-story buildings proposed in two hundred and forty units. And my only point in raising the issue was that information was not correct about what you were being asked to consider. And again, respect the passion of these ladies, but unfortunately, their testimony does not constitute substantial competent evidence and is not something you can take into consideration. I think at first reading, we demonstrated fully consistency with the comprehensive plan and land development and respectfully requested approval.
Do we have any questions from council members? Do we have a motion to close?
I'll move second.
We have a motion closed from Councilmember Miranda with the second from Councilmember Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilmember Citro, would you mind taking item number seventy-four?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. File number REZ nineteen ninety-four. An ordinance be presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning the property in general vicinity of sixty-six oh three South Trask Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section one of Zoning District Pacification IG, industrial, general to PD, planned development, residential, multifamily, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Vera. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say something before I get my vote, sir, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You know, sometimes these decisions are very hard to make, especially when you're dealing with people that want to do good work and help out the community and then you have those advocates who are watching out for the community as well. Sometimes you don't know what you don't know and I found some things a few minutes ago that I didn't know in reference to the process. So, that's why I asked Legal, I want to talk in the future about that process, so residents and citizens know the process. Because sometimes when you know the process, you have better decision makings. And again, a deal is a deal. We made a deal with the magistrate. He came forth and this council made a deal. We would do what was right as far as the law is concerned. I'm going to go give a yes on it, but I just want to make that clear for the record. I'm giving a yes because the deal was already made and I have to honor that, especially when the judge has made a decision and we collectively made a decision as a board. But again, I'm happy that sometime information came out. I'm more knowledgeable of a little bit of the process and want to get more in tune to, so I can make sure I can help the citizens make decisions of their time. Thank you and a bold yes.
Ding Felder, Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
No.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson vote in no and Ding Felder being absent.
Thank you very much. Next item is item number seventy-five.
Mr. Chair, if I may briefly, sir. I have to step outside for a little bit. I have something from my private sector duties, a conference with an expert on a case. I have to do by phone. I don't know how long it's going to take and then I have to pick up my son in case if I'm not back. Do you mind if I just quickly interrupt the process and do a couple, just the motions I have to make today? And they're really, really fast. Is that okay, sir?
Okay.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Just really fast and, boy, I got to leave in one minute. It's really fast. I move for a commendation to be presented at G3 Life Applications, a local sports organization for youth to be presented at a date to be determined.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any objection? Go ahead.
Thank you. Retroactively, a commendation to Rody Club of Tampa that you and I presented, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any objection? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I also move that a commendation be presented at a time to be determined and obviously, all of council is always, is welcomed and I'm sure expected to come to outgoing clerk of court, Pat Frank.
Second. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I, for forthcoming apprenticeship week, I move that a commendation be given to ironworkers local three-nine-seven for their helmets, the hard hats program.
We have a second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, lastly, I move that the.
Wait a second. I just want to hear.
There was a second from Goode and it was a unanimous vote.
And it was unanimous? Okay, just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
And then, lastly, I move that the term poke the bear only be used by Councilman Citro and no one else in future hearings.
I'll second that, but pertaining to what bear are we talking about?
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Alright, Mr. Michelini, we have to swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm here on item seventy-five. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Schiff, is this your item as well?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything, sir?
Same thing. You have any questions?
Any questions? Any comments? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number seventy-five? Is there anybody at the kiosk for item number seventy-five?
We're closed.
Wait, is there anybody registered online for seventy-five?
No, sir.
We have a motion closed for Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Councilmember Miranda. All right, Councilmember Miranda, would you mind reading item number 75?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number REZ-20-12, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 4155, 4157, West Cypress Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classifications, RS50 residential single-family to PD Plan Development Office Business Professional, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro. Roll call, vote.
Viera? Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Manis Kako?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent and Viera being absent at vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that this was the last hearing that you had before you went to virtual hearings, and this is the first hearing you've gone where you've been back to personal hearings. So, in that regard, we've set a new record.
Thank you. We're making history every day in 2020.
I would like to ask you if you would take up item 80 next, if you could?
Since I'm a nice guy, and Councilman Ding Felder noted that on the record earlier. All right, let's...
Should we ask if there are any objections to that?
Any objections to how about number 80?
Mr. McAlini, don't poke the bear.
All right, number 80, go ahead.
I'm here to answer any questions. That was, that was heard virtually, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have to swear him in again since he hasn't moved from the podium? No. Do you have any questions for the gentleman? Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number 80? Is there anybody at the kiosk or anybody registered to speak online for item number 80?
Move close.
Second.
We have a motion to close for Councilman Goode. Second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilman Goode, would you mind reading item number 80?
File REZ-20-39, subsequent ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 4502, West North B Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, RS50 residential single-family to PD Plan Development Residential Single-Family detached, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode. Second from Councilmember Miranda. Roll call, vote.
Viera? Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Manis Kako?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent and Viera being absent at vote.
Thank you so much, counsel. It's been an enjoyable day spending here with you. Thank you.
Yeah, why wouldn't it be? It's city council. Always fun. Item number 76. We have two applicants on the line, Randy Cohen and Kami Corbett. If you can turn your cameras on, we'll swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Kami Corbett, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, with law firm Hill Ward Henderson. We are here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 76? Do we have anybody at the kiosk or anybody registered online for 76?
No, sir.
Nope. Do we have a motion to close?
We'll move.
We have a motion to close for Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Carlson, would you like to read item number 76, sir?
Yes, sir. File number, I'd like to move file number REZ-20-23, subsequent ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 250, 298, and 347 West Shore Plaza, 4901, and 4915 West Kennedy Boulevard, 525 North Occident Street, 4813 North B Street, and 10204, 253, and 440 Northwest Shore Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, PD Plan Development, all CG uses excluding outside storage and display to PD Plan Development, retail, medical office, business, professional office, residential multifamily, hotel, restaurant, commercial recreational facility, vehicle repair, minor and major, bar or lounge, college, school, providing effective...
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda. Do, let's take a roll call vote.
Viera? Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Manis Kako?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried with Ding Felder being absent and Viera being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 77. The applicant is Alexander Castaneda, I believe is registered. If you are, okay, I see you. Please raise your right hand and we'll swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have anything at this time?
Yes, good afternoon, council members. I'm Alex, and my father is Alex, and we're the owner of the property. The staff report was sound consistent. We provided all the documentation that was, that was requested, and made all the revisions that were needed. I'd also like to add a little background information. My parents immigrated from Cuba over 25 years ago and worked very hard in this country to make a living. My brother and I were born and raised in the west Tampa area. Our idea as a family is to build two houses on this land, and for my family and I to live on one of those houses. We see many houses being built in that area with a lot less than 50, a lot frontage, and we would like to have the same opportunity. Like it was said, the staff report was sound consistent, all the revisions requested to the site plan were made, and we haven't received any call from a neighbor opposing our request. So, we reflect the request that you approve our rezoning application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicants? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 77, REZ-20-32? Anybody at the kiosk or registered online?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to close?
We'll move.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda. Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number 77? Or did I give you the last one?
No, I'd be more than happy to take it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number REZ-20-32, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 3015 West Spruce Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, RS50 residential single-family to PD Plan Development Residential Single-Family Detached, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode's. Roll call, vote.
Viera? Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Manis Kako?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, before I vote, I was going to say this, I'm not going to hold this developer or this gentleman hostage because there's two members out, so I'm going to change my vote, and I rarely go, never do that, but I'm going to do it just in the honesty of it. I don't want to hold somebody up for us having an incomplete seven. So, yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no, Ding Felder being absent, and Viera being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. We've already done 78, 79, and 80. Councilman Goode's? Let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
We have a few more items. We go to staff reports, and we'll try to be out of here by five. So, we're in recess for five minutes. Thank you.[1115.82]
Viera, Goode, Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder, Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Meniscako.
Here.
We have a physical quorum with Viera and Dingfelder being absent.
Alrighty, number eighty-one. Do we have the petitioner online?
He is. They need to unmute themselves and turn on their video camera.
Okay, please unmute yourself for item number eighty-one. I have Frank Kendrick and Charles Lucain. If you can hear me, please turn your cameras on and unmute yourself.
Mr. Frank Kendrick is not on, but Mr. Charles Lucain is.
Alright, if Charles is on, if you could turn your camera on and unmute yourself. Okay, and do we have another?
The other person is not logged on, and Mr. Lucain needs to unmute.
Mr. Lucain, if you can unmute yourself. Are you unmuted? No?
Just click the microphone to unmute yourself.
Just hit the microphone button, it'll unmute you so we can hear you.
Mr. Lucain, there's a microphone. Just click that, and you'll be able to unmute yourself. They haven't unmuted.
We're unable to hear you, so you need to take yourself off mute. Look for the microphone icon and just push it, or click on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone who's registered to speak on this, do you know?
Unmuted.
Alright, can you hear me, Mr. Lucain? Anyone? Can you hear me? You're still muted.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, we can hear you, okay.
We have our...
Wait, wait, raise your right hand, and we're gonna swear you in. Raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Alright, go ahead.
So I'm saying, because we have our builder, he was supposed to be on, but I don't see... I don't see him on.
Alright, do you wish to add anything to this hearing?
No, we don't. We have a couple of people here to support, but that's just in case we need them. We don't need to speak again.
Okay, do we have anybody in the public here in the chambers that wish to speak? Anybody at the kiosk? Do we have any concerns or questions from council members? Unless they have to speak, it seems like it's gonna go in your favor. So, alright.
Motion closed.
We have motion closed from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope? Okay, item number eighty-one. Whom did I leave off?
I took the chair.
Councilman Goode, go ahead.
REZ twenty, that's fifty-four, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of fifty-one eighteen East Seventeenth Avenue, City of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, RH fifty, residential family, to PD plan development, place of religious assembly, providing effective date.
Second.
We have a second, Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera. Viera, Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder, Meniscako.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder and Viera being absent.
Okay, you received approval, you're all good to go. Thank you very much. Alright, item number eighty-three. We have Fred Henry here. Please raise your right hand, as I swear you in.
I've been sworn.
Oh, you've been sworn, that's why you were just here. Go ahead, sir.
Counsel Fred Henry, Domain Homes, five seven zero three, South McDill Avenue. Here to answer any questions you may have, and I once again appreciate your time and consideration.
Do we have any questions for the gentleman? Alright, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number eighty-three?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody at the kiosk on the other side here that wishes to speak? Anybody in the chambers?
Yep.
I see now we have motion closed from Councilman Goode, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilmember Carlson, if you would not mind reading item number eighty-three.
Yes, sir, I'd like to move file number REZ twenty dash seventy, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of nineteen oh five North Mitchell Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, RM twenty-four residential multifamily, to RO one residential office, providing effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera, Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder, Meniscako.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder and Viera being absent.
Alright, next item, thank you very much, sir. Next item is item number eighty-four. And we have two individuals that are, I believe, signed in as applicants. If Mr. Sam Corson and the second person, just says Hamilton. If you could turn on your cameras and unmute yourself so we can swear you in. Sam Corson.
I'm here, can you hear me? Here we are.
Alright.
Did you want to give Mr. Hamilton Jones a chance to get on?
Do we have a Mr. Hamilton too that's coming on the line?
He should be on the line.
Okay, if he is, please turn your camera on and unmute yourself. There he is.
There we are.
Alrighty.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Alright, go ahead.
We're here to answer any questions the council may have.
Do we have any questions from council members for this item, item number eighty-four? Hearing none. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, item eighty-four? Anybody at the kiosk or anybody registered online? Nope, alright. Do we have a motion to close?
So move.
Motion closed from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion is now closed. Councilmember Citro, would you mind reading item number eighty-four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number REZ twenty dash seventy-three, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning the property in general vicinity of ten eighty South Clearview Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD plan development, to PD plan development, private recreational facility, providing effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera, Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder, Meniscako.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Dingfelder and Viera being absent.
Alright, item number eighty-five, we have Mr. Clayton Brickelmeier. If you are on, there you are. Unmute yourself, raise your right hand, and we will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give today is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Unmute yourself, Mr. Brickelmeier. And Mr. Jones, you're all set, you received...okay. Uh, okay. Unmute yourself, not on camera yourself. We still can't hear you.
It looks like he doesn't have audio.
There it is. There it is. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
It was telling me the organizer had muted me, I'm sorry. Clayton Brickelmeier, six oh one North Ashley Drive, here representing the applicant, and I'm available for questions.
Do we have any questions? Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number eighty-five? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered online?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to close?
So move.
Motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Councilmember Miranda, item number eighty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number, number eighty-five, file number REZ two oh dash seven four. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of six twenty-four South Magdill Avenue, City of Tampa, Florida. And more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD plan development, medical offices, business professional offices, to PD plan development, medical offices, business professional office, providing an effective date.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro, roll call vote.
Viera, Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder, Meniscako.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried with Viera and Dingfelder being absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item number eighty-six.
And I believe Jan McLean from the legal department.
She is on.
Yes.
Yes, she is.
I am on. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and City Council, Jan McLean in the office of the City Attorney. We are here today for file number BF two zero dash zero one, which is the second public hearing on the proposed designation of a brownfield area of the Heights at Grace Point Green reuse area located at twenty-two fifteen East Henry Avenue. An application was submitted to the city requesting designation of said area to assist in the assessment and remediation of the environmental impacts. The details of said designation have been outlined in the document provided to City Council and included for public review at the clerk's office. The city staff has determined that all statutory and public notice requirements have been met and recommends that the council approve this designation in accordance with the statutory provisions. At this point in time, then, it's for the consideration of City Council to approve the resolution, which will designate the Heights at Grace Point Green reuse area as a brownfield area as specified in chapter three seventy-six of the Florida statutes.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council members?
Move the resolution.
Wait, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number eighty-six?
No, sir.
We do not?
Second motion.
Wait, anybody at the kiosk? Hearing none? We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda.
Motion to close, please, first.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close from Councilmember Citro, second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we have a motion to move the resolution from Councilmember Miranda, I believe?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, okay. We will go to staff reports, but before we do, item number thirty-four was polled, it's a six-point-seven million dollar item. And that's per a memo from the Chief of Staff.
And Mr. Chairman, that's also related to the new business that's on the agenda, I believe, so it may be appropriate if you want to hear from the administration on that.
Yes, sir. Do we have anybody there in... In the legal conference room? Anybody that wishes to speak on item number thirty-four? Thirty-four?
Yes. Hi, this is Russell Halpern from TNI with the city of Tampa, and I'm here with Dennis Rehero from the Chief Financial Officer. And I just want to point, this is an item, Dennis has the enabling financial resolution on. We had a small delay with some of the paperwork. I appreciate that you gave us this walk-on item. We're in the midst of upgrading or planning to upgrade our financial system and all the attending HR and purchasing systems that go with that. For these last eight years, we've been in a partnership with the county. The county finished their negotiations and have led us into this next part where we pick up our part of the implementation. Our partnership has allowed us a substantial discount with Oracle. We're getting up to a ninety percent discount on our subscription licensing going forward. We've managed to also get quite a savings for bringing this item to you today, to the tune of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars or so, by getting this on the agenda at this point. An additional services discount offered by Oracle via us moving forward. But the priority for this item is, we do have to be upgraded before the end of next year. We have an aggressive twelve-month implementation ahead of us, and so we're looking for the approval here. We've got these two parts. The ongoing part of our budget has been, maintenance has been approved. We, so we've been paying for this, we're actually gonna be paying a little bit less for this, our ongoing subscription than we have in the past. And the services, as you see in front of you, comes to just over six million, and we're ready to move forward with an approval. Dennis and I are here if you have any questions on the item.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion to move item number thirty-four?
Thirty-four. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if you can, would it be appropriate now to move file number F twenty dash six five three nine six, the resolution on the addendum?
The walk-on.
Oh, the walk-on, do we have a motion to...
I don't, I don't see it as a walk-on.
What's that?
It's under, it's at the top, new business.
On your addendum, your addendum?
Oh, the addendum, I'm sorry.
There are two related items, two related items.
Okay, do we have a motion to move that resolution, eleven thousand, I'm sorry, eleven million forty-four thousand?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilman Citro.
Where's that at?
On your addendum?
On the separate page?
On this, on the addendum page?
At the top.
First item, new business?
Ah, okay, okay, alright, I got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. That settles that. Item number eighty-eight is a resolution for three million dollars. We have a memo here from Pete Brett requesting approval. Do we have any questions from council members? Hearing none, do we have a motion to move the resolution?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Citro, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Okay, next up is item number eighty-nine. We have a memo from Dennis Rehero, our CFO, transmitting the said resolution here. Do we have a motion to move the resolutions?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Next up, we have a resolution here brought up by Councilmember Carlson to transfer the five thousand dollars. Do we, we have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next up is item number ninety-one. We have a resolution presented by Councilmember Viera for five hundred dollars. Do we have a motion to move the resolution?
So move.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is a motion from Councilmember Goode for five hundred dollars. Do we have a...
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a written quarterly report, providing an update on the Stormwater Project. We have a memo from Vic B. Day. We just need to receive and file, can I get a...
So move, receive and file. Second.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Okay, any opposition? No. Item number ninety-four, we have Solid Waste Department to appear and discuss the rate structure of the sustainability of recycling in the city of Tampa.
I'm here with Councilman Salgerio, Deputy Administrator, Infrastructure Services. Can you hand me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna give you an overview of the program, a quick overview, then we're going to the rate, and then why we have the program, and then finally, how are we gonna sustain this program? So, just a quick overview, the contractor for this program, recycling for the city of Tampa, is Waste Management. And they're located on Thirty Fourth Street, just north of Atom O Drive, which is really close to our waste-to-energy plant. Our drivers collect approximately eighteen thousand tons a year for recycling. And at that point of collection, probably fifty percent is rejected and taken to our waste-to-energy plant. So that leaves us with nine thousand tons that goes to Waste Management. So, once it that Waste Management, it's further gone through to see what's usable and what's not usable. And we pay a couple of different rates at that point. For intake rate, we pay ninety dollars a ton. And right now, it's averaging for the year, six thousand four hundred and eight tons that will go through there, that we pay ninety dollars a ton on. It gets further rejected from there, whatever gets rejected, so far, we estimate this year of two thousand five hundred and ninety-two tons that Waste Management would have to dispose of. And we're charged a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for then to remove that, those items. So that is a residential overview, and that comes out to about nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year to run that program. Another rate that I wanted to bring up is that the average customer under residential pays thirty-four ninety-one a month. And out of that thirty-four ninety-one a month, thirteen dollars and forty cents goes to the recycling program to sustain this recycling program in the city. Also, under this recycling program, the city gets back sixty thousand dollars from the contractor for public education. So now I want to switch over to why we have the program, and just a couple of bullet points on that. It's a program that Solid Waste believes in, with its public support for it. It's a program that Solid Waste believes in, with its public support for it, it fits in with the Mayor's Sustainability Program, and it also takes off some carnage from going to the Waste-to-Energy Plant because we have a limit on our permit, so it keeps us under that limit. Third thing I wanted to bring up to you is how, how are we gonna sustain this? This is a one-year contract with Waste Management. It's, it's standard deal throughout the southeast, so many cities our size are paying the same price. But also, a lot of cities are folding the program, but we want to continue with it. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna continue to educate the public, to reduce the amount of rejected material. We, we're also gonna, and we're monitoring this closely, and we're in talks with Hillsborough County, because they want to develop a countywide recycling program where all the cities in Hillsborough County would be a part of this, and I think that's where we can really sustain this program. So we're gonna concentrate on that, but that's still two years away. So we may have to negotiate another contract with Waste Management or whoever else made bid, and we would look at some tenants in that contract that would be more favorable to the city to sustain this. And so with that, that's, that's my overview of the program, with the rate and sustainability, and if there's any questions, I'll take any. Thanks.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So thanks very much for the report and the update. I, I know that recycling is, has become a situation that's hard for many cities around the country to sustain, and I'm hoping that Tampa can do that. If you could please keep us informed when, when the next time comes around for renewal of this project. I do appreciate your report. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, no problem. Well...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is item number ninety-five. We have a memo from Vic B. Day, Director of Mobility, with the staff report. Any questions, or can I get a motion to receive and follow that?
So moved, receive and follow.
Motion to receive and follow by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Goode's, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, next up is item number ninety-six. We have a memo transmitting a staff report from Mr. Rob Rosner regarding a professional coffee shop and entrepreneurial space incubator at Tampa Union Station. I think that's a great idea. Councilman Carlson, do you have any questions or comments on that?
No, I just want to thank Rob Rosner and the administration for, for taking a serious look at this and studying it. The friends of Tampa Union Station are very excited, as are other people who are interested in historic preservation or in transportation or in supporting entrepreneurs, and so what, I can do this later if you want, but I'm gonna make a motion to ask staff to come back and report to us in April on the status of this.
Would you like to do it now? We have April first, we have April fifteenth.
April, April fifteenth.
Under staff reports?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, next up, we have an, a motion originally made by Councilman Viera, and we have a memo from O.C.A. Nguyen transmitting a proposed plaque. Any questions or comments? Can we receive and follow that?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Nope. Then number ninety-eight.
We did that.
Uh, no, did you make the official motion, Councilman Citro, for item number ninety-eight?
Yes, he did.
You did? You did? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And our last item of this long day, city staff to look at all options relating to Chapter fourteen. Who would like to speak on that? That was Councilman Dingfelder's motion. Item number ninety-nine, is there anyone here?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Council, Susan Johnson Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. If I could just ask that the PowerPoint be put on the screen, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So yes, this is our, our report in response to Councilwoman Dingfelder's motion two weeks ago regarding, or directing us to consider all options and use all available tools related to Chapter fourteen with regard to the resident complaint at the Towers of Channel Side on Park and Rec establishment at the, on the ground floor of that condominium. Next slide, please. And the next slide. So Park and Rec, as you know, is located on the ground floor of the Towers of Channel Side, which is on the corner of Meridian and Channel Side within the Channel District. Next slide. The area that Park and Rec occupies is an area that has been previously identified in prior wet zoning as Retail One, and it was originally wet zoned on September thirtieth of two thousand and five through ordinance two thousand and five dash two seventy, which approved alcoholic beverage sales with a full COP classification, beer, wine, and liquor, for on-premises consumption for a nightclub, various restaurants, the pool area, and in sealed containers for consumption off-premises. The, uh, a second ordinance was adopted in two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven dash two oh two, that also further approved and slightly modified the existing wet zoning. And then finally, the ordinance that is currently in effect with respect to the property, if I could have the next slide, please, is ordinance two thousand and eight dash one fifty-three that approved alcoholic beverage sales classification to four COPX, beer, wine, and liquor consumption on-premises only, and the purpose of this application was to specifically incorporate the patio area into the wet zone area. And City Council imposed two conditions at the time of that approval in two thousand and eight. The first one prohibited speakers in the exterior of the wet zone property, and the second condition prohibited the playing of amplified or live music through the exterior of the wet zone property. I would note, too, that this was a condition that the applicant agreed to, and residents of the Towers, condominium Towers actually signed a petition in support of the wet zoning application and requested that these two conditions be included as conditions to the wet zoning, and so those were incorporated at that time. Next slide. This just shows the wet zone area, the area that's marked Level One on the left side of the slide. You can see down towards the bottom left-hand corner, the area that's outlined in bold is the first floor of the Park and Rec establishment, and then moving to the right of the slide, the smaller area on, on Level Two is the second floor, kind of lost area that's within the, the Park and Rec establishment. Next slide. So Park and Rec again is, is in, on Meridian and Channel Side, and it is within the Channel District, Special District, as delineated in the Land Development Code. And so because of that designation within the Channel District, noise in this district is governed by Section fourteen dash one fifty-three of the city code. And so what that means is that noise is measured using a decibel meter and a decibel reading. You can see on the next slide that if the noise meter or if the noise is above eighty-five dbA between the hours of six PM and three AM, then at, when the measurement is taken at the property line of the property generating the sound, then it's potentially, or, or is a violation of the city's noise ordinance. Would also note, just based on the comments that you received two weeks ago, that Section fourteen dash one fifty-eight of the code exempts unamplified human voices, so noises just carries up, just normal conversation, even if it's a lot of people, is exempted under the code. And then enforcement of the noise ordinance requires that a five-minute warning be given, and that five-minute warning lasts for forty-eight hours, meaning if there's a warning given today, then if a second complaint is received and there's a second noise violation or excessively loud music within a forty-eight hour period, then a citation can be written at that time. And so based on the complaints, we did have TPD go out and do some, some monitoring and take some readings, and got Captain Brett Owen, who you can see on the screen, who is going to briefly discuss TPD's effort.
You're muted, sir. Mr. Owen, you're, you're muted.
Susan, have them advanced, which one?
We still can't hear you. Nope. Just hit the microphone icon there, should unmute you?
He did.
He did? Okay.
He may need to unmute something on his device.
He might even check the keyboard, maybe keyboard, that'd be on mute. Check your keyboard, see if it's not on mute.
Do we have him muted from our end? No?
No, his mic is green.
His mic is...
It has to be his device.
It's probably an issue with the computer or the system you're on.
Good afternoon, this is Legal, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'll get you guys on that. We're gonna try to patch Miss Captain Owen into our...
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So over the past couple of weekends, we've gone out every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to take noise meter readings at Parks and Rec. Thursdays and Fridays have been just fine, noise levels around seventy-one, seventy-two decibels. On Saturday night, we went out there and the noise level was eighty-nine point six decibels.
I'm sorry, Captain Owen, can I interrupt you for just a second and ask for the slide to be advanced, please?
Next slide, please. Thank you.
Oh, and the next slide?
There we go.
Okay. So now you can see the date and times that we went out. So on Saturday, October thirty-first, we went out, there's a decibel reading of eighty-nine point six. So we issued them the forty-eight hour warning, that was at ten to fourteen PM. At eleven fifty, the officer returned and received a meter reading of ninety point four and issued them the civil citation for the violation of the ordinance. Also noted was on October the twenty-third, the decibel reading was between seventy-two and seventy-seven, and then when someone would open the door to walk outside or inside the establishment, it would spike above the eighty-five decibels just from the opening of the door. They were not cited, but it was noted. So, given that, you know, obviously, the noise level, being at eighty-five decibels, violations are easily in that ninety range plus. We've had violations, not necessarily this establishment, but others that have been in excess of a hundred. So eighty-five decibels is quite high. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilman Goode's.
Is, is there, is there a penalty for strike one, strike two, strike three? Are they just the same strike one, strike one, same penalty fine?
So the first, the first warning is just that, it's a warning. We let them know that they're above the decibel reading, that they need to lower their noise. The second time we'll go out and find a violation, we issue them a civil citation of the fine amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. And it increases after that.
After that, on that particular night?
The maximum fine would be four hundred and fifty.
Okay, on that particular night, or we go back out there on Saturday night, we then go to four fifty, or it, it just accumulates each time we go out there on that particular day?
They, they would get a citation for each additional violation past that first one.
And, and under the code, Councilman, the second violation carries a three hundred dollar fine, and the third and all subsequent violations carry a four hundred and fifty dollar fine.
Is that, can, I don't want to just pick on Park and Rec, but what about our, our other establishments? Sometimes we...
Those are the penalties established in the city code.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because if that's the case, if, if we're having this much issues in these residential, what I call urban mixed zones, where you've got clubs and you've got residential people, I mean, I'm looking at our ordinance, and I, maybe it's time to look at maybe making some changes, because if I move into a residential area and it's a mixed use, and I've got a bar underneath my residence, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how, how in the future, going forward, how are we going to combat those issues? Because I see that being an issue with the development that we're going with the city, because we want retail at the bottom, we want this and that, and when you bring on these extra additives, I think we, we're gonna look at, maybe looking at the code, because that's what I'm seeing right now.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I ask also a question, maybe a follow-up to that? With regard, and this is a question for Legal to refresh my recollection, I don't know whether the council is, is aware, but is the, is the special use in any way tied to the noise ordinance with regard to adverse impacts? The special use, the special use that allows, the special use that allows the sale of alcohol?
Well, this particular property is actually under the old wet zoning, so it is not a special use approval, it's actually a wet zoning. So we, we do alcoholic beverage permits differently now, but this is actually a wet zoning and not a special use permit.
And what effect would that have with their ability to sell alcohol? Any?
No, it doesn't have any effect on their ability, so long as it's within the confines of the approved ordinance.
Okay, this is under the old ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, we've heard from, in meetings and separately, we've heard from a lot of residents in that building in and around, and I feel really bad for them, and I, I want to try to find a solution. But as, as Mr. Goode said, we also have had problems in other parts of the city. I regularly get complaints from South Howard, I get complaints from Hyde Park, and it's not all about drinking, there are other kinds of events that are loud. One resident sent me an example from Atlanta, which apparently is a more strict noise ordinance, and I passed that on to Legal. But I, I think we should make a motion, Mr. Goode's can make it, or I can make it, but we should make a motion to ask Legal to come back, I know you all are slammed right now, but maybe the first of the year or something, and come back to having studied noise ordinances in other cities to see what else we can do to strengthen these things, because it's becoming one of the most common complaints that I get.
I agree with you.
Do you want to do it for January fourteenth or February fourth, February eighteenth?
Mr. Chairman, if we can address that first?
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, Susan Johnson Velez, again, so, yes, this is one of the, well, one of the items that was set for November nineteenth for further discussion was the noise ordinance. If you recall, it was part of the Growth Management Workshop two weeks ago, and so it is set to come back to you in two weeks for further discussion, and that was going to be one of our recommendations to explore modifying the noise ordinance at, at that time. I did want to note as well that yesterday, we had delivered to the Park and Rec management a letter notifying them of violation of their two conditions under their wet zoning, because there were speakers that were placed on the exterior of the patio that, that we discovered, and also, and I believe Captain Brett can confirm, that on at least one of the nights when TPD was on site, there was, by music being played from the speakers, both of which violate the two conditions of their approval. And so it's my understanding that we have, we have heard back from the management already, and they have indicated that they will be removing those speakers at this time.
Ms. Velez, is there extra duty at that, Captain Brett, is there, is there extra duty at that establishment?
No, sir.
Ms. Velez, in the city, don't we require extra duty at, at wet zone bars?
Yes, within, within certain districts, that's correct.
Yeah, in downtown.
In downtown, yes.
Because I, I've been, I've been hearing that, and I've been noticing that within the city. I don't know, because obviously, I know, I didn't want to work the bars when I got older as an officer, so that might be an issue, but I know that, I know a lot of officers don't want to work the, extra duty at the bar, so that might be issuing, when you have them there, you know, usually they can combat some of these noise problems because they're there, so I don't know what a solution, we may need to get the chief and see what we can do as far as that's...
They have not requested...
Pardon me?
They have not requested extra duty.
They have not requested, what I'm saying, within our wet zone ordinance, don't we have a requirement that extra duty has to be in there?
Not sure.
Does anybody in Legal, can I ask? Does anybody in Legal, can I answer that question?
Well, so if I can just address, I think, what Mr. Shaw might have been getting at a clear was that despite the fact that this property is approved for alcoholic beverage sales through a wet zoning as opposed to a special use permit, the enforcement mechanisms that we have within the code in Chapter twenty-seven would still apply to this property. There is, there are provisions that allow council to consider revocation or suspension of the alcoholic beverage approval. For example, if they don't have the required security officers or off-duty officers on-site as they're required to code.
Okay.
Similarly, if some of the noise complaints, if they get to be, you know, if they continue on a community, that could also be a basis for considering revocation or suspension of their alcoholic beverage sales. So there are options for enforcement.
Thank you, Ms. Velez.
You're right.
Anybody else?
The, could I...
Go ahead.
No. Also, it just made me remember, there are all kinds of sounds that are going on, as I said, not just from bars. And so if there's a time of day where there's amplified sound or loud noises, another example is Ebor City. There are people that drive up and down Seventh Avenue blasting stereos and revving really loud engines. And I get a lot of complaints about that, too. But do you think that, do you think that the, that what we have scheduled on November eighteenth is sufficient, or do we need to go ahead and schedule a follow-up?
No, I think November nineteenth in two weeks, when we come back to you with further recommendations from the Growth Management Workshop, would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. That concludes the agenda.
Except for...
Except for... Public comment.
Except for the public comment.
Oh, so the public comment that is recorded. Can we ask the clerk that it be distributed to all council members so that we can review it and hear it? Is that okay? Is there any objection to that? Or do you want to sit and listen to it?
Is it possible that it could be added on to the end of this so that the public can listen to it?
No, I don't believe, well, it's available. We have to talk about, we have to talk about that moving forward. But as for today, I was looking at the resolution that council passed when the state of emergency went into effect. And there's a section that does say that voicemails, a voicemail number will be published and made available. And also that voicemails will be played prior to any action by the city council on an item related to the voicemail. I also suggest council that they are available and the clerk will distribute them for your ability to hear them. But I shall also say that, that being the case, any of the foregoing rules may be temporarily suspended for the meeting then in session by a vote of five. So if you just want to suspend that to have to hear that, I will tell you that under Florida statutes, you haven't taken any final action on what I'm told are the two subjects primarily of the voicemails. That would be the sustainability resolution and the item that you just heard on Parks and Rec. So my suggestion would be waive the rules for voicemails today. Have them distributed to council. And then if council wants to, I think it would be very difficult for council to leave recess and then just play the tape. I think that would not be appropriate. So my recommendation would be if council wants to hear it, you can hear it individually unless you feel the need to have it played now. But other than that, council, I should also point out that this is our first experience today with this sort of hybrid meeting. And my recommendation is you may want to reconsider having pre-recorded messages as opposed to people being able to come here or the kiosk or be able to phone in and do it live. We have, how many, Madam Clerk? How many?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. At three minutes apiece, you can determine how much longer that will add to your meeting.
But Marty, it's really just going back to our old rules for in-person meetings, right?
Exactly.
Well, yes and no, because we are utilizing what Florida statutes calls communications media technology. So we have to also comply with Florida law and administrative rules with regard to using this sort of technology. So we don't necessarily have to. We can amend this to take out voicemails. Or you can just say that voicemails can be offered, distributed to council, much like emails are. You have the opportunity to hear them. They will not be made part of the record necessarily. Except if they're quasi-judicial. And as a matter of fact, there's a confusion that came up this week because voicemails cannot be used in quasi-judicial hearings. So when people in the public call in, they cannot leave a voicemail. It has to be pre-registration. And that caused some confusion this week. So that's another reason to want to reconsider them. So my suggestion today, council, is pursuant to your resolution, by a vote of five, you waive the rules, get them distributed so you can end this meeting by a little bit after five o'clock and still have the opportunity to hear them in advance of taking action somewhere down the line on those two items.
But do we want to take action on the process going forward or just...
Yes, you want to get a motion to waive the rules?
I think we should say to the public also, we can meet you in person. We can talk to you by phone. You can email us. We can meet you individually by Zoom. There's lots of ways that we take input from the public. And I think that constituents like the ability to use Zoom to come in live. But there are so many options right now that it's confusing to everybody, especially if there's one set of rules for quasi-judicial and another rule for everything else. So why don't we just make it consistent with the quasi-judicial rules?
Okay. Do we get a motion, or can we have a motion to suspend the rules then?
For today.
For today?
Let's start with that one.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposition? Okay, so moving forward, do we suspend voicemails? Since we now have the in-person options?
If that's council's pleasure, then I can take that under advisement. And because this is in the resolution, we're probably going to have to suspend the rules next time, just as we did it just now. Because I do have to, this is the only meeting we're going to have, except for the night meeting, which is quasi-judicial. So I have to get direction from council as to whether we advertise, whether we're going to offer voicemails for the next regular meeting.
So instead of saying what we're not going to do, can we just say that we're going to take public input only from, in the meeting, we take lots of public input before the meeting, but during the meeting, we only take public input through in-person?
And the rest will be distributed to council members just like emails are.
In-person and...
The voicemails.
But what about the Zoom? We're still going to do that, too, right? Not at all?
What?
Yeah, it'll be, it's a hybrid. We're always in a hybrid format, so they can come in.
No, I'm just saying that instead of talking about what we're not going to do, let's talk about what we will do.
Oh, certainly. They will have the access to go to meeting. But again, they can't do it with their smartphone. They have to...
So I would like to make a motion that we would, that we would...
Do everything except voicemails?
Focus public input on in-person testimony and go-to-meeting.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Goode. Any discussion? Any objection? All in favor?
I didn't hear too much. I didn't hear that.
Aye, aye?
I do not necessarily disagree, but there is only five of us here today. There should be seven of us to make that major of a decision. What we, what some people may be thinking is that we're not wanting to hear the public comment. And that's just what might be perception. So I suggest we wait until we have a full council here to make this decision.
Okay, so we've waived the rules just for today.
Right.
And then when we have seven members, possibly the next meeting, then we'll take action there.
And in the meantime, council, I just want the public to know that those recorded messages will be distributed to each of you. So you have the opportunity to hear them. And again, it's on items that no final action has been taken on. So they will still have other opportunities to come in in the future to be able to make their points known in addition to what they've already done.
And I want to say, you know, for everybody watching knows, and for the record, I and my colleagues want to hear all the information from the public. And we regularly respond and communicate with the public. We want to hear all of it. This is about, this is more of a technology issue, that there's so many different platforms that it is a burden on staff. And it is confusing for the public also because people don't know what the rules are and it's difficult. So all this is doing is it's, we're providing an additional option that we didn't have before COVID to give remote access. We're just trying to limit the options so that there's not so many...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council, for your understanding.
And thank you, council, for your assistance in this. Thank you.
I'm going to go to information reports and new business now. Councilman Goode, do you have any new business?
I just have two quick ones. Gentlemen, there was a popular DJ that passed away last week. Unfortunately, for me to ask for a special commendation for this gentleman, Mr. Chauncey Harris, well-known DJ in Tampa and around the Bay Area. Again, AKA DJ Shotgun. I mean, he was a very, very popular person in Tampa and throughout the Bay Area. Let me give a commendation. The service has already happened. I'd like to present it to the family this weekend.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman, motion passes unanimously. Councilman Goode's...
Last and final, sir. I've had several phone calls, emails, and references to the dirtbag off-road vehicles. I almost hit a gentleman, too, this past weekend. I've seen several accidents on Forty-Fifth and Hillsborough with these bikes. Last night, I was taking a sign down by the business. There were three bikes that cut across the Forty-second and Hillsborough. The one bike stalled in the outside lane. Vehicles were coming. I had to yell to the young man, "Drop the bike and get out the road." He dropped the bike and then lucky I was able to wave and the car went around and the other two guys came back on the side, on the side of the sidewalk with their two bikes. And they wound up getting the bikes home. I don't know what legally we can do, but I'd like to make a motion that TPD and Legal research, if we can't have some kind of ordinance in reference to these dirt bikes, these off-road vehicles. I don't know if it's fines. I don't know if they're taking the bikes. I don't know, but they can come back with some kind of information because it is becoming hazardous and dangerous. And also the noise as well from a lot of the residents. A lot of people at home now, and I've got calls from business people saying those bikes, those off-road bikes are just revving the road, shaking the houses. And I'd just like to see if Legal and TPD can come up with a plan or if there's an ordinance we can come up with to try to combat what's going on. Because I've seen too many people getting hurt and killed with these off-road vehicles that are on our drives.
And how much time did you want to give them?
I know they're busy. I would say at least maybe a couple of months. I know they're busy. But we've got to come up with a strategy.
January fourteenth?
That'd be fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'm sorry, did you want that in just a written report?
No, sir. I'd like to have that appear if they could because there may be questions from other council members. I know some other council members have also received letters as well. So we need to make sure we don't get anybody else's safety issue for the city, for those riders and also the residents.
And you want that as an in-person?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode for January fourteenth. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your...
Councilman Carlson?
Thanks, sir. Walk Bike Tampa, today, connected to one of the quasi-judicial issues, said they would like to come back to us to give a report at some time. It needs to be at least thirty days past that particular one. But they did an analysis of walking and biking in and around the Bay to Bay, McDill area. And so I would like to invite them to come back to talk about, not just that maybe as a case study, but also the potential for improving Tampa's walk-bike situation. And so I would like to move that we invite Walk Bike Tampa to come present to us. I was thinking either February fourth or there's a workshop on, sorry. It could be February eighteenth. There's nothing on there. Or February twenty-fifth is a workshop if you all want to discuss it.
Do you want to do like a ten-minute presentation, February eighteenth, first thing in the morning?
Yeah, is that okay?
First thing, meaning after public comment?
Yeah. So that's my motion.
All right, February eighteen.
Counsel, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just a question with that. That would be a presentation, because otherwise it could devolve into a long policy discussion. What's council's intention? Because that might be more suited for a workshop. It depends on what your intention is.
Do you want a ten-minute presentation or do you want a back and forth?
I threw it out as either one, so what do you all think? Do you want to have a longer discussion at a workshop or do you want to just have a ten-minute presentation?
But my suggestion is if you set it for ten minutes, that you, please, in order to protect your...
Schedule, yeah, I understand.
That you hold it to that.
Do you guys have any preference?
I say ten-minute presentation. Let them do the talking. And then if we need to make any motions at the end of that meeting or anything, we can...
Okay, yeah, because we can't make a motion. Okay.
February eighteenth. We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Councilman Citro, do you have anything?
Nothing today. Thank you, Mr. Care.
Councilman Miranda, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Councilman Citro, I'm going to hand you this gavel.
I got it.
And I'm going to make a motion that we present a commendation to the Purchasing Department for the Achievement and Procurement Excellence Award that we can present them. They ask either virtually or in person. I think it should be done. I mean, I think it should be done in person. We're socially distanced here. It's a very big deal. And I'd like to do it, let's say, December third. Not wait too long on it, at, under ceremonial activities.
Motion made by Councilman Meniscoco, seconded by Councilman Goode. Roll call. All right, any objection? So moved.
Thank you very much. You may have a motion received and filed.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, council.